America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the March ninth meeting? Nothing. Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Vergelt, is there a second? Any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries. Any public comment from anyone? Do you know if Jim is fine?
I don't think so, I haven't heard anything from him.
Bees are supposed to come in. Does that somebody want to go executive section or not?
Sure.
He has a situation, the regis don't know what situation last week where a hauler on Wednesday came in and apparently they don't separate loads on Wednesdays, they just dump the garbage trucks so the guys can continue their routes and this guy pulled out the scale and Bees are told that he couldn't dump and the guy said, blankety blank blank blank, I'm dumping and he drove off and dumped and left. So Bees are bringing in some documentation about what happened and whatever he's got to support the fact that we don't normally do normal dumps on Wednesday and then we'll have to decide what to go from there, I guess.
Jason, did you bring your camera?
Yes, I did.
Can Jason get a picture for, you know, we still have our whole picture up here?
We just got a bunch of these done too long, didn't we?
Well, we rejected it last week.
Oh, okay, okay. So yeah, this is close.
You know, I guess they, we do have a.
Yeah, that is.
That's right. I was gonna say, I thought you had, we talked about that before.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That's my, my.
We took that picture for the book, didn't we, on the rotunda?
There you go. Okay, very good. Sorry.
Not without a three, three massive.
Yeah, and that was.
You've changed a lot, so.
Sweatpants days.
You've changed a lot, you sent a new picture.
What are your second time goal, no problems?
I have, I, this was just really tired on that day. Of course, God, her fourth day she gets like flash where she just feel awful that.
Really?
She had temperature eight and she laid out and wake up and be gone.
Oh, really?
And then the next day she gets another per hour or whatever, but.
Was she just trying to get you to do the house cleaning or?
I don't know. But nothing ever you do, okay, you just feel like.
You felt kind of different a day after.
My second one, yeah, just really tired and feel eighty.
That's right. I didn't think, I just felt like I just woke up just warm all day.
Yeah, I need to get a sore arm, just a thing.
The first one I got a sore arm, the second one I didn't. And now they're saying, first they were saying they weren't sure if the vaccine made you immune or you couldn't carry it or whether it just matched your symptoms or basic math or still, but it's not true. Yesterday I heard that others in Congress said I say like it's your immune ninety-five percent you can't transmit.
Oh, really?
Can't transmit.
So I can't.
If you have no shot, you're perfect, you wouldn't catch rate two weeks after your second shot if you've got one, one shot.
You're going to give it to me.
I forced ninety-five percent.
That's kind of hurt us.
Well, I'm not going for being as yet, because I heard from one source.
Good morning, Dylan.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody today?
They're doing good.
Mark to come in? First thing.
Sure.
I finally got the notary thing figured out.
Oh, yeah.
Bringing a couple things to you guys this morning. There was a fifty dollar fee for the bonding on each one for Morgan and myself. And then there is a thirty dollar fee that needs to be sent in with our applications to the Secretary of State's office. So I guess just bringing up those things to your guys' engine this morning and asking for the money for those.
If I'm not mistaken, it's good for six years?
Yes, the emissions are good for six years.
Mark, you can come in. We'll run that through today's bills if that's okay.
Yeah, here's, here's the table first of each bonding. And then with the actual application, I just will have to send the application in check on each one. And then second thing this morning, I had an individual call a while back inquiring about the purchase of tax certificates on properties. So I did a little bit of digging into that as far as our county is concerned. There is a state statute on the books that co-pivots the sale of tax certificates unless the county commission passes a resolution waiving the provisions of that statute. There was a resolution passed back in two thousand and seven that purported to waive the provisions of that statute. The resolution that was passed in two thousand and seven, at least in my opinion and the, I consulted with the head of the civil division out in Pennington County on it as I was looking at it. The resolution that was passed in two thousand and seven is problematic as in it qualifies on when a tax certificate will be sold. From my understanding and in my opinion and the opinion of the individual propensity that I consulted with, we can't do that. It needs to be either all or nothing type of rules, or we can't pick and choose who we want to sell them to. So I had Don draft up a new resolution that is rescinding that resolution from two thousand and seven, so we'll get that off. And then you guys can take it under advisement over the next couple of weeks to decide if the sale of tax certificates is something that you want the county to do or not to do. I know, at least with the qualification and that old resolution, it looked like, from my point of view, the widespread sale of them is not something the county wanted to do at that time. That's why they were trying to qualify and why they would. But you must make that decision down the road. My main focus is just get that one off, so we're not.
What exactly is a tax certificate and what would you use it for?
I'll let Mark explain that. So a tax certificate is when a property does not pay their taxes for the prior year. At that point, the county can choose to either sell those at a general public sale or the county holds that tax certificate. And that's what we've always done is held that tax certificate. So between the years of three and six, those properties that are negligent are to be put into a process to take the tax certificate back to the county so that we would own that property.
Were you, if the price of the tax is in?
More or less. I mean, it's basically the tax for those years that are not paid would be back to the county at that point. In my understanding, as far as private people like to buy them, they buy them as a somewhat risky investment proposition where they buy the tax certificate and then if the property remains in, over years under taxes for, what, how many? Three to six years in that timeframe. Three to six years, then they can get the property instead of the county holding it and getting it after that timeframe. And then at that point, the, if the property was sold during that timeframe, the tax purchaser, the tax certificate purchaser would receive their payment of tax plus any interest that had accrued during that time. So at this point, that's why, from my understanding, that's why the county is keeping those taxes.
If I, if I was someone who wanted to buy these tax figures, do I buy them at a discount or is it just face value?
You would pay the tax value that is due to the county. Because basically the county is not going negative because of the sale.
Right, I understand that, okay.
But the way that those sales work is they're all sold in one big general sale at a certain point in the year, it's not.
Right, certificate, tax certificates go on on December first and that's what we advertise in the newspaper each year. Those are the negligent tax individuals, people, whoever. That cert, that newspaper publishing is what is negative for that year.
By any and all, if I decide.
Right, well, no, you can come in and we would have to, if we were selling tax certificates, we would have to give them on an individual basis on a certain day in December.
Okay.
And then. But that, that's down the road, you guys decide if you want to do it.
Sure.
My main thing this morning is just so we can get this resolution, we're getting that old one off, so we're in compliance one way or the other. And then down the road, if we decide we want to, if you guys decide you want to sell them again, then I'll just have to work out a new resolution to make sure it fits within the confines of the statute. Like I said, that's down the road. And if you went down that road, there would need to be additional help in our office to handle more of that, between the lawyer side and the amount of properties that we have that are negative.
Any further discussion? The resolution is one of the best I've seen, it's a one sentence. Therefore, be it resolved that the Robert's County Commission rescinds Resolution two thousand and seven dash twenty-four. Also a motion by Commissioner Zempel to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash eleven. Is there a second to that? Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution, signify for the motion, signify by saying aye. All right. Opposed say no, motion carries.
I believe that's everything I had this morning. Questions for me this week?
Nice article in the Courier, loved you.
Obviously that's a later tonight.
Yeah, Mimi sent it to the Shota too, so it was Thursday, the show was yesterday.
Can we do a little follow up today? We don't talk to you about maybe our policy with COVID-19 thoughts and so forth. What's your take on that?
Until there, at least in my, my opinion, until the vaccination process is to the point to where everyone has had the opportunity to get it and if they consciously chose them not to, I don't believe we can penalize people until that point. And then even at that point, once everybody's had the opportunity to get the vaccine, then if they get sick, it would be in my opinion that they have to use the normal sick leave or vacation. But until we hit the point where everybody's had the opportunity, I don't believe we can. Go down, go down.
The group is eligible now, let's say it's over sixty-five and some of the sixty-seven choose not to get it.
Until there's, they, the problem with that is they may be eligible now and they don't want to get it now, but there's nothing changing their mind to get, there's nothing stopping them from changing their mind to getting it later. So until the.
Just because your group is eligible doesn't mean they have to have it now.
Right. And there could be issues to where they can't get it.
Yeah.
I know there's been people that have, you know, gotten some sort of other shot, got tetanus shot or something, then they can't get another vaccine for ninety days or something, or they got some sort of condition that they need to get under control first before they can get the vaccine.
My son had, he had four, he had an infusion where he can't get shot for ninety days. He's a teacher at the rest of the teachers are all getting vaccinated, he can't, he has to wait till ninety days.
Yeah, so until, you know, I think the last piece of news from the White House is that everybody will be able to be in line for one starting May one. I don't believe everybody will have the opportunity to get the shot, probably June or July. Until that point, we, in my opinion, need to keep operating as we have been operating. And then once we hit that point, that just can change.
Enough.
Anything else?
Start thinking about the wording.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you guys.
You have a, your second one, I know. People first. People first. I want to, I want to qualify because see, I'm the only, I don't know, I mean, it should be said forgiveness. Don, you're not hungry.
Yeah, I actually got called in on Thursday, they had an extra one. Somebody offered to do it or whatever. I went on, but four times.
Which one did you get?
I got the two parts of the dinner. They were doing the Johnson, the Johnson and CEP.
Yeah.
They had a few of them.
Teacher forgiven Johnson, Johnson.
Yes.
He can't live like a week. He has to watch the wheel to get that one, they said no, they just had a few.
But I, I'm more comfortable with the two part.
Somebody, you don't want the AstraZeneca, that's not even available yet. Still a question, problems over here, apparently with blood clots, suspecting.
See how many million shots they give them?
Seven.
Thirty-seven, eighty.
Yeah, seventeen million or something like that, like they said, so, you know, fractional percentage. I'm surprised it's that few though, only seventeen million, that's for all Europe, that's a lot of shots.
We've got a purchase order presented for a adding machine for our planning and zoning department. We need approval for the purchase of that, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll just make a donation.
To the, to the courier. It's all the way up to ten.
Yeah, zero.
Their motion, motion by Carlson, is there a second to approve the purchase? Commissioner Vergelt, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed say no, motion carries. We also have a resolution, twenty twenty-one dash twelve. This is routine, has to do with Roberts County firefighting designees. Be it resolved that a list of the individuals set forth below are hereby authorized to request Rangeland fire assistance on behalf of County of Roberts, South Dakota specified in S D C L forty-one dash twenty A dash eleven. The authority to request assistance as provided shall continue full force in effect until terminated or modified by resolution of the County of the Roberts Board of Commissioners. And it lists Fire Chief Jeff Pegler, Assistant Chief Pat Stickla. Something more here from the Department of Agriculture, they.
We had a, we had signed back in two thousand and seventeen a, an agreement with them, you know, so that agreement is still there, we just needed to upgrade or, or use the resolution or that.
Their motion to approve the resolution by Carlson, their second to that. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed say no, motion carries. Yeah, we'll take the new car. Yeah. Reminds me, we need, we need some information on the one we need to bring back. Tyler gonna bring that when he gives his report?
Oh, otherwise I would have.
We need the location and the.
Tyler was wanting to give that to you.
We're bringing back a towel, the other towel that we bought is still out there.
Couple years ago, you came back with a smaller book, of what the state spends per mile, you had a couple of that, say they want.
What the state spends?
Oh, yeah, the highway per mile of this. Bleeding, snowing, that. Just a free book, or you picked up, picked up a couple.
Remember that? Was that the spring convention, a couple years ago?
No big deal.
You wanna, you guys wanna discuss the Good Friday, just to get that off of our suite, is that one way or the other?
What did we do last year?
Last year, we closed at noon and all employees got four hours, you know, time, free time. The employees that worked at the jail, that had actually worked on Good Friday afternoon, got double time for those four, for those four hours.
And the highway gets the entire eight up to ten hours, which they take, well, they take Thursday off then, right?
They take Thursday off anyway, so.
They don't work on Fridays anyway, so they take a hard on Thursday.
Right. So it's just a, kind of wanted to throw it out there, being, getting closer and, you know. How we headed for minutes?
Same as last year.
Commissioner decided to close county offices at noon on April tenth, two thousand and twenty for Good Friday. All county employees will receive double hours payment.
I guess then. I want the fences, I mean, we used to do it all the time with the courthouse, it didn't cost us anything, but then we decided to start including that, everybody else that costs us money, four hours times how many people, it's a, it gets to be a big number. Wait, now we got money, I don't want to, because we did it last year, we got money to spend this year, because we got extra COVID money, then next year becomes, well, we did the last two years, you know?
Well, and I think last year it was kind of like, oh, it's been really a crappy year.
Yeah, probably.
We were actually closed at that time to the public, you know, so.
Yeah, I go with what everybody else wants to do, I sit on the fence.
You need that form of a motion or no, just general agreement?
We really don't need a motion on that, just general agreement.
All right, we're gonna do it the same as last year.
I mean, sure, everybody's the same.
I hope they ever get it.
Way back when, people were afraid of them.
So that's general agreement, same as last year.
Is that it, the consensus then?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Get your doughnuts next week.
By golly, that must be wonderful. I'm gonna have to stop with this pretty soon.
You got a particular kind you want to put an order in for?
Better watch my mouth, I get a bribery or something, everybody's wild. What's the crane of Dennis?
You know what, I took a tour, actually I was in Browns Valley and I stopped and took a tour of our, our bridge that's being under, under construction.
We left progress in three weeks anyway.
And yeah, it's coming along really, really, really well.
We got a lot of equipment on.
And the foreman, assistant foreman, they're, they're two brothers. I think he said they're third generation bridge builders. Definitely their dad was in the, in the business to do it and they, they gave you all the time I wanted and I said, ah, I'm gonna get out of your hair here, it was kind of muddy walking around, but they're, they're really coming along with it.
After three weeks, I mean, all they have is those wooden pilings on the bottom, which that was just, that's not a, it's quite a long cross, so. Yeah, it seems to be able to go ahead.
I really like to see that, they're really making progress, I mean, they want to start really, they had nice winter, I mean, it's, they're really moving.
Then they went yesterday, I went away to this bridge, not coming from water, Tommy asked to do was like, we must run across a dozen of those tandem side dumps with, I don't know how many wheels does need each one of them. And then today, like even the town, they were just jumping off the interstate going that direction. They wouldn't be hauling roofless material down there, would they?
I'm not sure, I know what you're talking about.
I saw a lot of them. A dozen of them yesterday come down. Yeah, anybody in the board may.
You sent a picture of that wind tower that was on fire, was that one of them by someone?
Yeah. Yeah, I had asked Pat first of all, and then I sent a message to Dave Lau. And I said, do you know what happened, is this the location? And he, they both confirmed that, that it was one of them that.
Well, they're even operational, are they?
I came by there on Saturday, there wasn't a one of them.
Yeah, we went by Sunday, I was amazed at how close some of those are to the railroad tracks on the road. I thought they had a bigger setback.
Where's mine, I think it's that way.
One of them, believe it was sticking straight up, I swear to that tip over this way, it was outside. I'm amazed how close they built that one.
Yeah, they're supposed to be two and a half times back from.
Well, they know where the railroad tracks, the railroad track from outside.
I mean, it's not, I said that a couple on fire, um, there's a column there too, very tricky for that.
No, but they catch fire, they didn't run, I, you know, I can see they started up and they were short of the room somewhere, they were just.
Well, that was my assumption, is that they were doing kind of a test deal on and that's how it caught fire, but I, I don't know, Dave didn't, he didn't elaborate at all, he didn't.
On February twenty-eighth, when we were hitting the scene walls, one of them was going that day, Sunday, yeah. But when we came back on Monday, it was not.
We should have a motion to approve the plat that, that we looked at this morning too, we need to have a motion to. too, we need to have a motion to approve the plat. Somebody? Thank you, your second for that, Don, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye. Plat is approved.
So the Otterdale audit, the electrical audit, they're gonna be calling in on Congress call, they, it'll be Brad Nelson from Otterdale, and then Stan Lee, and then some guy named Carl, I'm not sure what his capacity is, but I've got a number that we can call them, there's, they set up, he set up the conference thing, and then we can just call them.
And do you have Doug review it?
Yeah. Doug will be up here at one thirty.
Not allowed to return on anything except for questions. Anything else is way too far away now. It's quite a, we're working a different thing with it.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a bunch, I bet everyone's gotta take a setting on, but they can turn down tonight. What do you think about the highway building down?
Well, first of all, we're, we have to, they, oh, not, first of all, we're gonna get into other things, you know, you would, it's all, certainly.
To come off that, off that, on that, you know. We just, seeing, I mean, to make up any ground, I mean, they had three rigs in the, in that old wooden building, a truck, a blade, and a, that, that truck that puts down the foil, whatever they call it, so, I mean, if you tear that building down, you have to find a house for those three units, and I think he was trying to, you know, one building where he's got four trucks in there, he's trying to get that down to two trucks, so you'd have to have five, you know, five, five things, it's just break even, like, it's got some additional space, but you seem to think that those could be some pretty big numbers, huh?
I would bet that's six million that you're talking about, that's, you know, what. You're gonna have to give it, six is approximately, at least, I would say.
Just like that?
Yeah, and you have to, I bet the...
Yeah, I bet all of that. If we're talking about those doors, even those doors, you figure, I mean, you buy the door, put a door opener on there, and then build the framework, it's gotta be that, it's gotta be that twenty-three thousand dollar piece of doors.
Obviously, instead of doors, that could be possible, maybe up there, it says eighteen, I mean, it's thirty-five, yeah, let's see, some...
Just the door.
Just the door, I mean, I hate to put it down.
Yeah.
I think you're looking at a million dollar building. I think so. I, just for curiosity, should tell Pat Tom Martin, just, I'm not against, I mean, this is a wild figure.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Or, what was the other one, you said Martin's?
Four, six and a half.
Oh, there you go. No, I, I, I just wanna, curiosity kills the shit.
But there's definitely a need out there for something else.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, I'm not against it, but I think it's gonna...
It's got that, that building, geez, if they get crushed doors, and this much space on the bottom, it's all, now, jagged looking.
Well, it looks like they lost a lot of panel off the door, and they just...
Yeah, yeah, one's got a door, it's still stuck up in the air, it doesn't come down anymore, so they had to put another door in there, that's all beat up.
You see where the floor is giving way, you know, that's got a basement, now, and then it's stuck, give way.
Oh, I didn't notice that, yeah, that's just, that's a scary place, you know, I gotta think a big window, that's got ripped out. They've got little big steel girders in there.
We called Pat, that's, oh, Beezer.
Do you have this number?
You hear, there he is.
Pat was talking about that with the first, come up and shoot, elevation, I don't know a lot.
Oh, sure.
See, we prepared, not only working on the bridge.
Yeah. Hey, Beezer, how you doing? Are you planning coming up yet today, or? Oh, great, 'cause we're, we're sitting here with twiddling our thumbs, we're gonna see if you can get in early, then you'd be better, so. All right, perfect, thank you, bye. Down his way. Yeah, I'd like to think you could get these three heats all, it was just cold storage, I mean, that wouldn't be so terrible, I mean, that would be the...
You can wish whatever you want.
Sure.
Anything is better than what it's today.
Yeah, it's...
It's not a matter of if we're, it's a matter of where.
Yeah, I mean, no better time, right now it's just free money, so.
This is not, this is what Todd sent me, according to your...
That was kind of, originally, I was thinking, you'd buy for real cheap, but now I think you'd be lucky to get by for five hundred thousand, and just do it, half of it heated and half of it not heated, you know? But, I mean, now, now you can afford to take it, like, that, 'cause we got that one with the war, and I, I, I assume there's gonna be additional funding coming in.
Well, I'm wondering if we, if we, if we can provide some more, maybe?
Well, I know, because I, I did, there was, I, I heard it was like three hundred and fifty billion dollar allocate, and they were talking about California, which is getting the, the biggest chunk, and they were getting forty-one million.
That's it.
So if we got, you know, that amount equal to what we got, the first time, we can rebuy.
Yeah, we got a hundred and a half million.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And that's what we're setting for second.
Yeah, then, then maybe you can afford to get a little more done, but I had it...
You got it, you know, that one.
What's that?
I think that was... I typed it yesterday.
Oh?
Just picked up very left off.
She picked up very left?
Very left off.
He doesn't understand, week before, we're on the stage, buddy jumped to...
Definition of character, that's usually not life, too.
Oh, and you want, do you need, need a copy of the bill of sale for that vehicle, or just word of fact?
You know, just, just a description of it, unless you got the bill of sale just handy, 'cause that'll, that'll give me the VIN number, serial number, where it's located, who the contact person is, to...
You got, you got one that's fine, you can find your way off to, that one more.
It's amazing, though, you ever trying to find the roadmap, anyone?
I don't think you even have, do you?
You've been sitting all, has them?
Like, where your roadmap? Oh, really?
Cause I picked up, you know, a couple for our vehicles, maybe by Mandeville, just when you go in their lobby.
I room, I room, so you just use the whole analysis.
Yeah, it's easier, but, yeah, we have a whole bunch in for the Black Hills, we used to go up to a lot, just...
You know, they didn't, some of that stuff, they used to act later when it first came off, but, before they knew fire, that...
Oh, the garments?
Yeah, and we, I don't remember where we were going, but we had to go to, I think it was Omaha, and it was very old, we got there, well, they had, they're much not updated or...
Okay.
They moved the road, didn't even matter, it was rebuilding somewhere, it's like, I don't know where in my, you know...
Even, when you come up to my place, if you come from Fargo, you get probably within about a mile of my house, and it says, you've reached your destination.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I get calls from people all the time, like...
Well, you know, I have, oops, sorry, my, my, it has two extra series of sections at the top, it's a state line, eight, it's eight feet, so there's a section thirty-four, and there's another section thirty-four, like, they...
Oh, sure.
How do they count?
Yeah, okay.
You know, if I have people from like Fargo delivering something, they'll be like, no, we got it on GPS, and I'll say, okay, good luck.
Yeah.
It's true, an hour and a half later, they call and say, um, we're up here by this, how do they count, six miles away.
Are you close to the landfill? I didn't see the landfill, like, you gotta keep coming south. Dude, you talk about those old garments, that was a nice little business, I bet that is non-existent anymore.
Yeah, a lot of the cars I would build right...
Oh, yeah, that was a nice product, I believe, because they were pretty reasonable priced and everything, but...
But then they, you had to buy an update.
Right, then, then you could buy it, you bought like the more expensive ones, you got three, up to three, thirty years, something like that, but, I remember one of the cars I bought, you had one of those, and I had to buy an update, they were expensive, several hundred dollars at the time.
Personally, Dave, he has, he was, he had one, and he did an update, and said, I could buy a new garden, so, hey, three, do you want my one?
Sure, yeah. Will you guys up there tomorrow, and Thursday, come by Thursday after?
Come back Thursday sometime, you know.
Not from today, is it?
No, just a travel day, I think I've got the agenda here, it starts at eight, eight thirty to nine thirty, I can't remember.
They fed you pretty good out there, too.
They do give you...
Three meals, a lot of breakfast, cookies and, you know, juice and stuff.
There's an extra seat, if you wanna go on.
It wouldn't be disgusting, this curiosity.
The last one I went to, I just happened to get a cold when I got out there, just sitting there, that, when you stand there. That's that one we went to, when we were rooting, gives you, Robert Coney, dude, see you went from Robert Coney, I was there a long time, once, it did several times, dude. Was it you and me? What did you do? Oh, Gene Parks. That dog is here, not there. Yeah, we're going to water town yesterday, like, it was just white on the hallway, we got about halfway there, and the clinic calls up and says, oh, the doctor's here, see, they, she lives in the Rockies, and they had eight inches of snow, so she's not coming, so we're gonna reschedule, I said, go, we are halfway there, we are coming, and then she said, okay, we'll try to squeeze you in with the other doctors, we got there in normal time, and fifteen minutes later, we're in an outage, so, like, no, we can't help it, turn around, going home after this.
How much snow did the water come with them, yeah?
They, I think I saw that they had like four to six, but it was...
Does it look like more over there?
Oh, yeah, definitely had more, I mean, it was crap, the road was crap, first got there, two o'clock, and we all, we're all helping.
I was just getting warm, if you guys sit your hell, if they saw it off, then... Yeah, it's gone today, it'd be nice to warm up, you know?
Yeah, get a little sun will help a lot, so we crap the road around here.
Stuffy, isn't it?
That's Beezer.
Oh, there's Beezer.
Call, call us, call us.
Well, you can wreck it, pretty consistent.
Please just come, please, do you see it?
Two, one, he brought home.
Oh, all right. Well, taking both on, maybe we get two different ones.
Well, they brought one home.
Oh, yeah. Maybe don't really, you got them on the...
Jesus, talking to a friend, she's going down there, he was just down in Fort Myers in Florida, he says he got a condo down there, he retired, and she's gonna drive back, uh, from Minneapolis, Fort Myers, or wherever they fly into that general area, forty-five dollars each direction.
Wow.
He can't be making any money on that, forty-five bucks each direction.
Whoa.
I don't even wanna get on an airplane again, but I'd be half tempted to go down myself for a few days.
What did I, ten dollars, fifteen dollars, twelve dollars? I'm gonna be back. If you say that, it's just gonna be a direct bill?
Yeah.
Seventy, seventy-one dollars, something around there.
Yeah.
Ninety-one dollars, or...
Yeah, yeah, ninety bucks, yeah.
Do you think that's, can be a rental loan for gas?
Yeah. I don't know, if they, you haven't even know this is Kayla's before I had a COVID, calling these stuff.
Oh. She been up for a while?
She just got back, died yesterday.
Okay.
Can I put that in your file?
Sure, sure.
Is that our copy?
Uh, this is the only copy I have, but I think he's got that.
Oh, okay, then I, we don't need a copy then.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Um, I'm sure you did, she has, she started printing these. It probably, this, oh, this printer was a very old printer, from my old system.
Do you wanna see this, Dennis?
She's thinking I'm gonna have to upgrade this printer.
Is it even, you guys don't use that time card anyway? You just do a regular voucher, like, you, I mean, your hours on your time card show one thing, and your hours that you're...
Yeah, so. You did, it's a little, uh, computer that goes with your, uh...
Yeah, with the, with the old computer system.
So it's, that's like a hundred dollar deal or something?
Hundred dollars.
For anything else, something like that.
But it's, this has been showing for the last three, four years now, we've been there, probably more.
See what else you've got to report, what can we get?
I really don't have anything else, uh, everything else is on, getting on the wall now, there's, there's, there's out there, I don't know if anybody's heard anybody, anything from anybody?
I haven't heard anything, this is, we got the list yesterday from Larry of who had...
Contacted him?
Contacted him regarding, regarding...
He does have some contract, there is contact incident?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Carlson for executive settlement, discuss personnel. Second, by example.
Like, I fly, I went back here all the time, I'd buy a phone, Menards, like, twenty bucks, like that. Sometimes it will last like a month, and the ragged, I got one hanging there that's not for, well, since early last fall, I mean, it is.
The flags at Menards?
Yeah, some, somewhere, we got somewhere.
This business, they're in movie though, you know, they really.
Yeah, they take a beat.
But this last one, we put up pretty good.
I think it was like nylon, and it was real light, and it stood up really good, but the rubber, pink and a lot of weed.
Oh, is that right?
It's over here.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want any more.
Oh, you have to talk the cat on this deal, you guys, just want to start him.
Did trucks on yesterday, sanding or no?
Oh yeah, sanding, more sanding. Pretty nice, see him stop this one.
Yeah, it was.
Everywhere, trucks in the ditch, on the hills and Pever, everywhere, I mean, a lot.
Were you trucking this?
Sound like, yeah, they get. Just kind of misty all morning and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. They clearing off now, warming up or no?
Yeah, and when the sand is eating him, good now, you know, but it's, they been out all morning, so. We got to wait, huh? We guys missed it. Pictures of the, oh, the bridge is coming along, it's going really well.
Yeah, what's it?
Like we said the other day.
Are they hauling riprap down there?
They got riprap rock already hauling in there.
But did you see these big side dumps, the double side dumps, they're jumping off on ten here and heading towards the valley, I wonder where they dumping it. I saw a dozen of them yesterday, like, one water town.
See.
It could be hauling, so it's on the west end of the hill. I, I know, I'm coming out of water towns, on the way to water towns.
They're, they're hauling a bunch of material for the interstate and they're hauling and dumping behind and working it behind the casino connection.
Oh, sure, that's, that's what they're going that bit.
And they're stockpiling material over behind there and they got all doubles coming in there.
That's, that's what it is, and I saw.
They're probably coming from water town there.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I know they're hauling doubles and.
I saw some crew over there, like, only the week, so that's, that's what it is.
Yeah, they're stockpiling a bunch of material over there.
Cause we know that'll be construction on the interstate this, this year.
Yeah.
South, south of Pever and south, and, uh.
South of Pever?
Or, you know, that structure in south, yeah.
Get the, get the banner up.
Don, can you have the papers out for that big stuff right now? Good morning.
Hi Ben.
Through some pictures your way and just to see how the bridge is doing, it's doing really good.
Yeah, starting on the deck, as you see, they're putting rerun on and, uh, the cap pour concrete, though, gets to be upgraded first when it stays warm, fifty to sixty degrees or the high heat, they don't know. That's gonna be two foot thick, you know, that, that bays on top there, so it's, uh, I never looked at the plans this month, but you know, it's over three hundred yards for sure, but. It's, uh, I can't remember, I had to look, but it's a lot of, lot of concrete. But just so you guys got a little update, and I took a couple picture last night at five, four after five, so you guys could see how it's coming along. And it's coming along a lot, and now that they're on top, because there's a lot of water going to the ground.
Compared to what?
What it was, so. First thing I got is I need a motion to, uh, we're gonna advertise bids for asphalt and for oil for, for this year. And I'd like to get into paper this week and advertise for two and a half weeks and then open up bids on that Tuesday, April sixth. Cause next week, I'm not with the short course, and then we got a couple days at the end of the month, so we might go to that Tuesday, April sixth. We need a motion to advertise for bids and put it in the paper.
For this for blacktop, you said?
For asphalt and oil, yeah, send it out, call next month.
Your motion to authorize that, motion by Carlson, second by Zempel, any further discussion?
All in favor, signify the same, aye, right? I suppose say no motion.
Is it all set to go?
So she'll just put it in and we have the same quantities and whatnot, and then we'll open bids on ten o'clock every day. So then, uh, I talked to Cliff, with construction management helmet, the tribe called. Getting an update on that Pever project down here south, he said they're supposed to hear something from the federal government, from the feds and the funding tomorrow. So, he had talked that, yeah, the law's gonna have COVID and the federal funding now, it's different at the state, and you're right, we're doing most of those state funds and feds. Already dipped into the state and they're working the state, her marketing probably more of a federal side, and all of ours, I guess, I mean, whatever, I shouldn't say. Technically, maybe.
All their stuff comes out of BIA, doesn't it?
Comes down to the BIA with the tribe, but the state doesn't like we get, but I don't know if it's, from the state level or from the fed, so.
Anyway.
Either way, maybe we'll find something else tomorrow. And then, uh, moving on, there's no questions on that. Uh, like, uh, do the joint agreement between Dave, Cam, and Marshall and Robbins again, like we've been doing, uh, we're, we're just renewing it for the year. We went through and we take the lowest, um, the prices on our equipment for the year with our, um, run rate, so we'll look down on that bridge. So we just need a motion to do the twenty twenty-one year again, and then, uh, we will sign three copies, and then Don will sign it, notarize it, and then we'll send it back to Marshall, and then Marshall will get it signed, send it back to Dave. Once Dave gets it back, everybody signs it, put the date and the date down front, on the highway, so. We just need a motion to, uh, do the joint agreement, Jim, this year.
Is there a motion to approve that? Assume it's the same as what last year, you said?
It's the same.
Commissioner Vergel, you're second to that. Carlson. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same, aye. Motion carries.
There we go. I briefly spoke with Tim Pearson and talking about, we were talking about, you know, trying to get the radios for the highway department on the stuff here. Frequency or a separate channel, you might say, and he briefly told me that we're working out a little bit. I don't know for sure if we did, um, too many things after a year, if they happen. But, uh, between, uh, we gotta do it through, we got a little maintenance, they did. Get switched over when they did the last stuff that we had to do, far as frequency wise, it's kind of hard to explain, but anyway, we're gonna have our L E T C meeting coming up on Thursday, which Tim and I suppose you might be able to react to.
Try to make it.
And then they're gonna have a radio guy there and we're gonna discuss more of that, and we're gonna figure out the, the most inexpensive way to do it. Cause, uh, if we don't have to do a lot with the repeater and try to just switch channels and do whatever with the radios, it'll be good, but. You know, in three years, they have to, they're talking about going to digital and all this other crap with the state, you know, I'm trying to. Yeah, for like money to switch over on radios and stuff. Our departments already have so many radios, but we're still on analog, so what that means is we can still be on analog and still make ours work, we can do this, cause we only need one radio for myself and another one that we have, we can switch forward to digital and work with the state. But the rest of them don't, you know, they're still. So we can get our coverage, you know, otherwise it don't pay to do anything. Anyway, we're gonna be looking into that, we're trying to get it more and more, and if Tim is at the meeting, they're also, the guys are gonna come up to the highway department, get a look at our radios, see what we have, what we don't have, what we gotta do technically to do the minimum, without spending forty, thirty thousand dollars on radios, you know. So, anyway, that's what Tim and I discussed this morning. And, uh, I do have something else, and we talked about a used, used semi, to find a used semi, add on to our fleet. Um, we got the one map truck now that we use, so we don't have the one semi truck, but to use that next in the summer. To utilize both, all of our trailers at the same time, can't, can't do that, I don't know if I can actually, probably, yeah. So I put on the front, this is a two thousand, uh, Kenworth that Heerse has out here, and they have, they have used trucks that have been in used sales for quite a while. And this is one that they got from Minnesota, and this is, truck was from Morris, Minnesota. Alls that did is all asphalt in the summer and it was put away in the winter and it was shaded in the winter, so it never, it never did any work in the wintertime, and then got all full of stuff in the winter, it just did asphalt palling, and I took a few pictures of it, and food for thought, if you guys wanted to go that direction, um, they wanted twenty-six thousand dollars for it, and that's what, and, uh. The third axle was a tag axle, and it would go on the front of these two tannins here and nothing in between. And they do have it, they haven't put it on yet, but I definitely would, I told them we'd have to have an omelet for the tag.
That's included in the twenty-six.
That would be included in the twenty-six thousand dollars. And this Kenworth has a lot of road miles on it, but so does ours, um, but yes, the chance I'm taking that, you know, it has a lot of miles, but it has good miles and everything else, and it's in very good shape, and the price is, is really good, you know, I mean. If you were to get newer trucks, less miles, I checked down here with John Source, they had a couple, three of them, two hauls. And, you know, you're looking at forty, fifty thousand bucks right off the pop, right off the top, you know, for trucks that are the same as this, look mileage, but not as good a shape either, you know.
How old is this?
This one probably has four hundred, five hundred thousand miles on it, just kind of like ours.
How are the tires on them?
Tires are real good.
That's got the trace right there.
It's the same here, it's just what we have.
Yeah.
Thousands of miles, I don't even know if that's. We got at least that also.
You ain't gonna find one with four, you ain't gonna find one with, you ain't gonna find one with four to five hundred thousand?
No, shit, I think Louis bought a truck with nine hundred thousand miles.
We got, uh, we want all the stuff in the summertime, we want asphalt, we also want all the.
Is it that?
Yeah, all Saraki, yeah.
I see that, I said last.
Yeah, I guess I did.
Hold a Volvo or whatever.
Well, you kind of up on that?
Volvo are kind of expensive, aren't they?
Every time we turn around. See, we have the water truck.
I think, I think the ad said one of them has thousand miles.
We gotta add two, there's no.
That's advice is intelligent, because they take this, they get the detail up before you sell your head.
Ripping everything off.
But I thought, you know, it's a decent truck, so that we'd have a water truck, and so we can utilize that, um.
Do they, do they do, uh, repair work out there too?
Yeah, they.
Mechanic, mechanic work?
Yes, they do, and they build stuff, and they, they can work.
Road parts, public road parts?
Yeah, they do road parts, and they car for trucks, it's just seconds expensive, but we do our, our belly though, so that we're hauling chips all the time, you know, flying out causing headaches, but, you know, it gets into a lot of money to do that and, and car stuff, so. But I didn't bring it last week because we had too much irons in the fire last week, or whatever, and then, so now we have a little time to play it, so. They've had it for a couple few weeks, but before they start working on flying equipment and getting many of things, they're gonna put this third axle on, like, if we get it, it will be, uh, they can make plays so that it'll be all done. It's not a steering, it's not a steering, but it's just go straight up and down, and we get through an intersection, we lift up. That's how ours is, that's always, always done, but you could get the steering kind of now too, but that's not what this is. On the north trucks, they all have speeders and all.
Uh, some, someplace they have a book value on this sort of thing, is that, uh, is that something that you wanna look, look up to find the book value?
No, yeah.
To me, the price looks reasonable, but I don't, I don't know.
No, the price is, so they're reasonable, cause you can't hurt, you can't find a truck any cheaper than this for what we got. You take a chance, cause this has got big pumpings more, and, and good motors, but it's got a lot of miles, but hey, you tell me a semi truck that don't have a lot of miles on it.
Yeah.
You take a chance on it and use it just like you.
Gene, you always refer to a wet kit, we need a wet kit.
We got a wet kit on here.
You wanna make a decision on this, or what?
You can take a look for a while if you want, but that truck could be gone in less than a few weeks, I'm sure.
Here is why they purchased it.
Because there are used truck sales.
Okay.
They got into it, they are there.
Okay.
They drive trucks and then they, they actually got a commercial one, they commercialized it off, and they're gonna get in the business and like hauling and stuff. But they out, four, five, they're all supplies.
I'm just trying to find, you, you'd given us a list of equipment that you wanted.
Yeah.
Was this on it?
This is not.
I can't find it, I can't find my list, so.
Would you surplus out the old one, or what?
No.
Would you keep that?
No, we need, we need pull, well, we gotta. We had, we used to have an old Ford, we have the old one too, we even left that, we got rid of it, and then we never got another truck to replace it. And we've been missing it ever since. I mean, moving down the semi, contractors since one year or either, yeah, I don't remember, we used to.
Fifteen years ago.
We used to pull the old truck tank around with that, when we chipped. We used to pull the old truck tank around with that when we shipped it, we used to haul with that, with that truck and then in two thousand, we got this new Mac and that was the greatest and the latest and then we got a new late, um, trailer for it. We got a new flat, new trailer and we haven't even updated that since two thousand. So you know, our gold boy has been, we got a lot beat up on it for a long time and you know, that's just another thing, but we'll keep it up.
This is your wish list, so this is just a list of what we have, right?
Oh, I'm back, back farther, there should have been, uh, a page where, I'm sorry everybody who ripped it out and now I'm spot, here it is.
Yeah, I had that right there.
Here it is, don't worry.
That's a pretty good price for you Tim?
Huh? I think it's a good price, I mean, if the tires are driven and the wet kit, ten thousand dollars right there. Darn tires, a fighter on Buckley, you sit there.
Yeah. This is, this is the list of one lane twenty-one, Blayna semi truck, broom, like a twenty-two gravel truck, eighty-five.
Oh, that's a front page.
Order right there. So.
So it's looking right there, it doesn't seem.
I had the semi truck down with the Blayna, broom, is that broom shot? I'm not sure, but.
What do you think?
Anyway.
Then we just, then they might check it from book value to see if it's not, make sure it's not.
Check it out, just check it out a little bit, I guess.
That's not a lot of help.
That's not much at all.
But you just wanna check it out and listen to see.
I know, it's.
I think I did.
You got a book value, you could ask them, you might have to, uh, Beers is probably the guy that want the book value for this.
Cause we could be safe, cause within the range of this.
You just gotta remember, they're doing labor at four, five thousand bucks or whatever it is, put that on, you know, that's added, otherwise it's under twenty thousand bucks. They're putting on the third axle, doing all that work and putting that third axle on and so that's why they added up, you know, to pay more money, cause they're doing more.
So can there be any room for negotiating?
Not too much at all, cause I'm sure that old.
The new trucks go pretty quick in, right over there.
If you want me to get a, a more of a, you talk like they're worth, I mean, it is what it is. They've been selling a lot of trucks, so man, missed twice I've been out there looking at trucks.
Obviously priced them right, if they're moving there.
This is the second time I've been out there looking at a truck.
Nice thing is, is diesel mechanics are kinda hard to come by. This kind of frame modification, I mean, you'd have to go to Beardsley or be in order to get.
Yeah, I would have to order Beardsley or you'd have to send it to Morehead and Thomas Two Falls or absolutely.
Getting a relationship with them on that sort of thing, it has some value to. I would, I would support it if it's the board going, yeah.
Well, so you even looked up a book, is it that twenty-six thousand can't be right for us? Either, either way.
No, that's true.
It's gonna be reading.
Like Tim, it's get good tires, that's, that's.
You see, they wanted twenty-six thousand for it.
Yeah, thirty-five bucks for a wet kit, right?
You know, so you added up, maybe wanted one second with the third axle, that's how the conversation was, so.
As long as that's origi, original miles and not a million for.
But you know, I think we got one truck at the farm, it's got over a million two on that shit, just comes right along, they never done anything to it, you know, just.
When he said that this owner had, you know, put it in, in the winter, started driving there and all asphalt, so can't get no better now. Other than if you're beating in the salt in the winter, then you'd be a little dumber than that did. Whatever direction you want me to go.
Motion to approve purchase.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Motion on the table, approve the purchase for the highway department, is there a second to them? Tim, are you saying that? Is there any further discussion on the truck? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Yep.
Just check with Martin and Bolts, just for a rough estimate?
Yep, I know a kid that works through Martin, all his down.
Check with both of them, you know what you want and insulated doors and you only want six stalls or whatever.
Now, you check on the right away, it's only seven feet from the, from the, that's one for the A, when I got to sharing, it's only seven foot back.
For what?
For, for the desk, for the line or on a, on a property line, he said it's only seven feet.
For A, but it's A.
But we're not A.
Oh, A.
It has to be seven, we have, you said we have to be seven feet off.
Seven feet off the right line. But I wanted to talk.
It's not, you're looking A, it's A and.
That would be if you're really on, on the other side of the fence.
Exactly.
Art, art property.
Well, that's kinda what she told me, I mean, that wasn't really also.
You need to go back to doctor, because I think that's correct.
It was A to A. I asked her twice.
Yeah, if we're really on, on the farmer's side, the chances would go in at three seventy from our property, but we're not A, so we're at our, you know, our twenty, I agree.
I don't check with. I don't know what Jack would, I don't see it, so. I'll also need doctor, not Mr. Fisher. But yeah, that's.
But he, let's say, get a bits of the old, they'd be high and we'd want to get more than that, so.
Yeah, we'll find out, it's three million dollars or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a rough idea.
Let's start talking about the inside, you know, when our trucks are running and you wanna be, not be all that soot and all that dirtiness going in there. And I found out from Stilson's, oh, you know, we had Twin Valley lot, you go in there and it looks darker than that and it's sooty and it gets thick and you got no way of cleaning that if you don't put care inside to clean, to keep it clean. So that was one thing.
Just on the top of here?
Everybody, the whole sidewalls, everything is just black and then when you, let's say you wanted to just spray it with insulation, you got no way of cleaning that once that's embedded in there and it's all in there and that. So that'd be another thing we had to think about, cause otherwise, you ain't cleaning it. You go down there right now in their old tire shop where they used to run one truck and the tire shop in there and it's black, it's black with basic space.
You had some kind of ventilation with that offset and that's expensive, that, that whole thing and then you use that, you use that perforated.
We got fans in ours that we use all the time.
Exhaust fans, sucked out.
Yep, we got exhaust fan in our old one, that one, you run ours. It's still, it's, it's, it's no way to run some of that, to get along some of that, you know? But I'm gonna be getting more information on that, but I don't know really what you guys are trying to do, so.
Yeah. Well, yes, I can, just kinda like that one, drop down to six doors or whatever.
See, I went there because it's low profile, you don't have to have that big of a roof as long as you got enough smoke for your snow around out, like the rafters, it'd be a little more money, cause that's like out there in the state, that's all steel. So it's different, if you have a wood rafter, you know, you're gonna have to have more beak up for that center pitch, but it's a little more money. But at least the building is more hopeful.
Yeah, obviously, I'm not happy with steel, right?
Yes, I mean, it's still, right.
Wouldn't have put steel in there, but.
So.
And are we looking at, for them, just to quote the building, that insulated, that the concrete, just shell?
We gotta try, we gotta try and stay doing just the shell right now, giving us a bit. And then all that, that's gonna, then we gotta add everything else on to it, you know, the concrete, everything else, the doors, the concrete. You gotta remember too, it's not just that, we got the concrete, we got electrical, we're gonna have to drill electrical in, we're gonna have to have all that power from the building over there, that's gonna be another eight grand, ten grand.
How much power do you think you need there?
Well, we have to move the power from our main building.
But we just have to have lights, right? What, you don't, you need more of the lights, you think, or outlets or?
We're gonna have to have lights and just for outlets, some outlets to plug in in case you gotta, you know, you're gonna need that.
Right, there'd be nothing more than that, lights and outlets, right? That pretty much it.
And then just open up and then power, and then we're gonna have to have probably, like we were talking about a generator backup that we need to do for the main building, we're probably gonna need one for that building too. For a backup generator in the winters, we'll get electricity and just power over there. I mean, we can do it by hand, I'm sure too, on, if that can. We definitely gotta have one of them for the main shop, on the shop. So we're working on a price on that for the backup generator. But I did talk to Locates on Friday, Thursday, you know, the, um, our main water line is in front of that old building, you know? And it comes off the top across from highway cap. So we have to make sure and then we have to tap into the water line, the water has to come all over there, stuff like that. So if there is one or another, it'll cost a bit. Especially with electricity, I talked to him last year about it. We got two poles that have to be taken down, armed by the old building and one of them poles has a line going across to the main shop, that's our main power. That would have to be moved over to the northwest corner where the pole is and come in from over there. So then the power would have to come over here with the high line instead. Right now, we have to probably change all that over there when the power comes in. Otherwise, electricity's gonna have to try and get power over to the corner of our other, our shed, our new one, and then go to the, you know, our, our existing shed by the wash gate. We'd have to get power over there and then power over to the next one. Otherwise, we're gonna have to have a brand new, like I said, this pole here, they have to come in here, tap in, make sure here, then we have to go all the way and dig over here, the new building to get power.
In terms of total power, if you had two hundred amps or something, that'd be a lot more than.
We have more than that, we have more than that now, we have at least.
Well, all you're running is lights and receptors.
Two hundred fifty, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you were talking about over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna own two hundred amp, but you don't wanna go smaller than you need, if you want two hundred fifty in case, you know, we wanna run a compressor in there someday, we could run the lines in there. Put a compressor in there, so if I have tires or no tires, okay. You know, when you jack it up and get tires changed.
We can load it up, there's a lot more to take out, we'll find out how expensive it is.
Well, you know, like I said, you can't get much for a million dollars. These are the companies that have gotten jobs though the last two, three years, and none of them expect under a million dollars.
Yeah, but I think if you're, if you're thinking about spending a million dollars, I mean, maybe you may spend a ten million dollars, I don't think the money's there for that. In my estimation, if you got more than half a million dollars in this thing, that's, that's way more than I'd be, that's what we're spending.
Well, I think.
Unless we got almost more COVID money coming out of the ocean this next year.
And of course, you know, we got last in this building, we have electrical, we have legs, we got the main thing, the water, water truck, that's it. So, but there is an angular head class, like you say, with electrical and water and stuff like that.
The cost will be way bigger than we think they are, just sitting there talking about it. I guess we gotta get started someplace.
But we'll add some prices, you know?
See what we're talking about.
Concrete alone is over a hundred, sixty-seven, I don't see that.
We heard it.
Yeah, so. We'll get prices when, when we get these other prices on the shelf, on the shelf of a building, then you'll know where to go, I mean, what graphics. Thank you, it's all happening.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, wait that time, holy cow. Kinda lucky then, you know?
How about this, you want this one back?
Likes it, it does, I mean, yeah. I've reformed a lot of concrete all over, it's usually like a hundred and five bucks, a hundred and ten bucks, about a lot of years ago.
I see all trucks, set up the engine plant there, made the foundation, poured the, dropped the cement in for my neighbors in the house.
I thought that was just his own personal use. Six, six dump trucks up there already, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Where your neighbors in the house?
Valtage, June.
Oh, Junior, okay.
Junior, Junior?
Oh, okay. I was thinking right next to you or.
Don't stay always.
So I got a better car, three days.
Don't you need one? Don't forget your blue book.
I think we don't.
She hasn't been getting a lot of.
I'm surprised, I thought we had one this year, I, I, people have called me and talked me on the street, like, the valuation's going up, I thought we just had one this year.
Is the sheriff having that? Or is it, oh, he was here earlier, he didn't say that he wasn't.
He had his vehicle there?
Do you want to go to those girl's sales, didn't you, or did you go?
I, I got him.
We got him, okay.
I'll go ask him.
Sure.
I don't forget the direct lunch, I had to go down there.
Yep. Here it is. And that is, I'll send you the, that is, this is Dave's, Dave Campbell, he's the highway patrol, he's in charge of the equipment.
Okay.
Um, there's his cell phone number, if you need it, and I'll send you, I'll send you the address.
That's not the address.
Yeah, that is, that is the address, but it's a, it's like a big county yard, and so when you drive, are you, are you going there?
It's on the truck bypass, is it on, on like, each side of the town?
Yeah, you drive, you drive past the gas pumps and into, there's a gate there that's open, you drive all the way till you get to the cars, because you'll see all the highway patrol cars, they have a bunch of brand new cars sitting there. And their, their, uh, his garage is the one that kind of in the, be the northeast corner.
Okay.
There, by, by all the cars.
All, all the state vehicles are kept there, they're apparent, like the D O T trucks and cars and all of that? I've, I've been there, it's been a few years.
You had your first shot then?
I did, yeah. March fourth, I got it.
What year is?
Yeah, April first, I'm due for my second one. I'm here now.
Is that the second one?
Yeah, I got mine.
You get one last fall?
No, I got one, that's fine. The second one I got, the more, I got, I got both of them.
Fuchsia.
No.
Fuchsia.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah.
I think the teachers are going probably this week, maybe?
I think so, yeah. For those three in a row, way I can get those done.
Well, they called me and I told them to take me off the list. I was able to get in a little earlier.
Don't have much for you guys, but maybe that's good.
Yeah, it's cool. Holy smoke, you keeping higher?
Yeah, we had a busy week. And kinda like I, so our, our total right now is fifty-seven, kinda like I mentioned last week. Um, we're really working with the jail to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to accommodate the other agencies that, that use our facility. So, um, yeah, we went for forty-four last week, we're up to fifty-seven. Yeah, we have Roberts County, Juvenal, and then S W O. Yeah, we have Roberts County Juvenile and an S W O Juvenile. S W O Juvenile came from, I think over the D County. We ended up taking in, so, so we're, we're busy, but, but we're finding ways of making it work so that we're able to accommodate the other agencies. They've been calling and asking for assistance, a lot of us. A lot of our other counties near, near us have lost their jails and, and, uh, so we're hoping to kind of really work with James to kind of make us able to really accommodate everybody else's needs, including court. We have the, we have our classroom set up now. So we'll be closed in our first in custody court day next Tuesday. We just tested the system this morning and it sounds, it sounds and it seems to be working really good. I know that, I know that the judge is excited about that. They'll just make things easier on our staff on court days. And then you don't have people needing to get into their jobs, stuck here behind the people that are stuck in custody, you know?
Gosh, that's a good scope of business, it's been a long time coming here.
Yeah, yeah, we had, the carpet, the room looks really nice and it's carpeted in and out. We got some acoustic tile in there. It's all set up and ready for us.
Great.
Well, I hope, hope for other counties.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's really our hope too, is now, you know, the Marshall County is the wall where they decide to come up here. They don't have to worry about coming all the way up here or take somebody up, bring them all the way back down there to court, and then bring them all the way back here again. So it just makes us able to facilitate for them much, much easier. So it's just less of a, less of a concern that they have, you know? I'm sure if we were in the same boat, I mean, I can't imagine that the legitimate nightmare would be sending deputies across the state of South Dakota just, just for a 20 minute court appearance. Uh, the only real bit of new business I have today is that we've, we've hired some new employees on the, on the jail staff side. I know James has done, they've probably 10 to 12 interviews. People interested in working in the, in corrections. He's hired two females, one that was a previous employee, uh, that, that, uh, after having children, decided that she wanted to get back into corrections. And then one lady that's coming back to the, moving back to the area. So hopefully, with both of those, our people will be able to keep in our facility. Uh, and then we have a male from the high school that is 18 and he started yesterday. So, that is, uh, that is about all. Yeah, things have been, things have been a little bit harmonious. Despite, despite some, you know, despite, you know, weather and, and things like that that, that come along in the small mucks in the road, like things have been really kind of starting to, to come together and, and all of our departments are working really well together and meeting their job. And I think it's really moving in an ideal direction right now.
Or do I just don't get used to it?
You know, it's.
Celebrate.
Yeah, celebrate when it's there and, and so, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, you know, we just have a lot of, you know, employees right now that when, when tough, stuff gets hard, they just, they kind of just learn and kind of set the expectation of just put your head down, work hard, get through it, and then come on the other side and just get better dealing with those situations. The next time they come up, they don't feel quite like such a hurdle. That would be wrong, so. Where is the Tourette?
Well, Facebook friends with Janice and it looks like she's really enjoying her.
Yes.
Working offshore fishing in Florida.
Key West, yeah, they were, they were, they were in Key West. It was over her birthday, I think, too, so.
She got pea lime pie for her birthday. Real pea lime pie.
What's that?
Pea lime pie?
Play lemon pie on my lime. I guess, I don't, I don't think I've ever had a.
Is it?
Did, did you get a visit last week from a disgruntled tax career threatening to bring charges to these commissioners?
I, I didn't, I didn't last week. I did, I did have a short, I have a very short, but did have a visit with him yesterday. He had some other, I watched the, I watched the meeting after I left, so I had an idea of what was, what was happening. But he had some other issues over the weekend near, or on his property. Some of the deputies have to go and, and deal with. So he wanted a visit regarding that. And then he did bring, he did bring some stuff up, but I, I basically advised him that, that tell he brings something in front of me, I, there's nothing that, there's nothing that I can do. And I don't really know, I don't really know what.
Would you have to go with Judge Shorty to have the charges?
I'm not exactly sure what that process is. I've made the, I've made the state's attorney aware that it's something that, that might happen. And both of us, both of us are under the impression that it's not something that we can be involved in anyway. So if it's something that he decides to, to bring, it would be something where the Attorney General's office would have to be notified and, and just, for the most part, turn, turn it over to them for them to make the decision if they see anything. So, but that's, but that's all I know of right now. Really, the only part that I know of is, is the part that I watched in the.
He made threats, I just wondered if he actually meant to.
No. Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was an easy day.
We liked them short streak ones, thank you.
Ready?
Is that the answer?
Yeah, we've got our 11 o'clock. Todd's gonna be calling in.
Yeah, Sherry coming up.
Sherry's gotta be present.
For 11 o'clock, Sherry, she's sitting there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they were getting ready to come up, I guess.
I think I would break it up on. Yeah.
I mean, you just leave the keys with Dawn, if you need an extra vehicle, we could.
Maybe she could clean it for me.
I don't think that's the route we're gonna go, but.
Can't they get the box though that have, maybe?
Six and a half feet. You want, you can. Fish house?
He wants to insulate it.
Is that yours right there?
Hello, Peter.
Hey, how we doing?
Good.
Good, sure. Yes.
Yeah, Dennis.
Dennis, yeah, I noticed.
Spoke a couple different times on the phone.
Right. I recorded the notes, I wasn't even here. I was on the phone, but I wasn't here, I didn't say anything, didn't do anything, didn't talk about anything. I didn't even hear, I recorded it in the notes. That's truly disenfranchising now. I'm, I'm, I'm just, you know, public comment, no comment, nothing here about my comments, nothing here about my concerns. You know, uh, that's why I brought her in, because I was afraid that I would go to Vietnam, I know, buddy, and it's exactly what I said, and I talked to you earlier about. This is, this is, this is, you know, this is, this is sad, I don't know. I just figured I'd let you know that I'd been waiting for this and I'd asked for it at the meeting, at the end of the meeting as soon as possible. And then to get it now and it has nothing, it says on nothing, that, that adds to everything I'm talking to people about disenfranchising.
Are we calling Todd or is he calling us, do you know?
He just called our office and he said he would be calling in, I don't know, so. I don't want to have that in these.
Let's see. Let's see, we talked on the phone. All right. We will, oh, here he is. Whoa.
Hi, Todd.
Hey, Todd, how you doing?
Hi, Todd.
Hi, I just got off the phone with Moody County and so I'm trying to get organized here, so, okay. I'm ready whenever you guys are.
We, uh, we have the 11 o'clock, uh, hearing, uh, to review ordinance number 26. We have on, on the phone, Todd Hayes, as, uh, for guidance and our parliamentarian that we do this hearing properly. Uh, Todd, is it, um, is it in order to, uh, read the ordinance that was printed in the newspaper?
Let me, uh, let me just begin by, by stating that, um, the board, the plans, the Planning Commission has already held a required public hearing, that was noticed, and a recommendation was made, is that correct?
Yes.
What day was that public hearing and recommendation from the Planning Commission held on?
February 16th at 8:30 a.m. in the morning.
All right, so, and then where we're at, and then did the, um, County Commission hold first reading of the ordinance on that same date?
No, we did not.
So we have not had a reading yet?
We have not had the first reading, no.
So today, so today we are looking at having a first reading and a public hearing on the proposed ordinance?
Correct.
And that notice was published 10 days prior to this date?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, the appropriate process would be here, would be to read the ordinance as proposed and then, uh, open the public hearing where, uh, you can set timelines for the amount of testimony and order of testimony.
All right. Uh, notice is hereby given pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 11-2 that on March 16th, 2021, at 11 o'clock in the Roberts County Commission Chambers, 4/11, Second Avenue, East, Sissons, South Dakota, is the time and place when and where all persons interested therein may appear and be heard before the county commissioners concerning the ordinance 26. After the public hearing, the Board of Commissioners will have the first reading of the proposed ordinance, change and set a second reading date. Ordinance 26, an ordinance amending Roberts County Ordinance 22. The zoning ordinance of Roberts County, as established by ordinance number 10 and all amendments thereto, in accordance with the provisions of Chapters 11-2, 1967 South Dakota Codified Law and amendments thereof, and for the repeal and all resolutions of ordinances in conflict therewith. Be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of the Roberts County, South Dakota, that Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance of the Roberts County, adopted by ordinance 22 on September 3rd, 2019, as amended, be amended to classify the following property. Lot B, except Lot B1, B2, Clark's Edition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of 1-122-48, and Lot B3 of Clark's Edition, and Lot B of Clark's Edition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of 1-122-48, to highway commercial from agriculture. Any persons wishing to present testimony may appear at said hearing or may file written comments with the auditor prior to the said hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My recommendation would be then for you to open the public hearing, begin with proponent testimony, allowing the applicant to testify first. If you want to establish a timeframe as far as timeline, it's your, we're welcome to do that.
How many opponent, pro, proponents do we have in the room?
This is me.
Identify yourself.
Timothy Scott Leonard. Those who are probably Scott, those are them deals.
How much time do you desire?
Couple minutes, a couple minutes? Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what we're trying to do is, excuse me. Uh, currently, B1 is zone commercial, uh, but when you read in your, by your zoning ordinances, you omitted, uh, self-storage in that, that used to be in your zoning ordinances. We just like that correction for B1. And then while we're at it, we thought, well, let's make, since we own B1 and all of B, let's just make it all one property or one parcel as far as zoning goes. So that everything we own there, B1 and B, or how it all works out there, yeah, would all be the same zone. All we're trying to do is, is make what's there correct and then make it all one piece.
This is already zone commercial, this is the new part that we need to, this is what the hearing is about.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Todd.
The issue of, the issue of commercial storage facilities being allowed or not allowed in the, in the, uh, commercial zone isn't the, the main issue, it's whether or not this property should be zone commercial, which would allow for all of the different types of commercial uses allowed in that zone.
Okay, you'll have your chance as you open it. Anything further?
That's basically it, I mean, because it's already a self-storage business there. That was put in by Refki back in 80s, 90s, something like that. Bowens purchased it. We're just trying to get it so it's right, you know? It's easier to ask for permission than forgiveness. So that's what we're trying to do there.
And I'd just like to clarify one thing, if I could, I mean, uh, like Todd said, that the issue is not whether you, what you're gonna put on that site, the, the issue is whether it should be converted to, uh, commercial in the first place, but the expansion that you are anticipating doing is gonna be on that piece that is already highway commercial.
Correct.
So, okay, that's.
But I don't believe it's worded in your zoning.
Right, and we were, we were looking at all three of them.
Right. So like I said, just, uh, when you do that, big change, little things fall through your cracks. I know I've been there and we're just looking to get some things corrected, so we can do the right thing.
Are you finished?
Yeah, that's in a nutshell.
Okay, any other proponents in the room? Okay, I'll call for opponents.
Harold Stilweski. First thing, I was in the meeting last month. And I submitted written documents, like you said at the beginning, and you accepted them, but then they were never discussed at the meeting. Someone showed a picture of a hole, and then the next thing they know, the board accused me of running a trash dump. But I was trying to explain that since 1998, when the storage shed went up, the problems my father is having on the property are the problems I'm having. Has nothing to do with you, you're the new guy. I want the history down on file. My dad complained in 98, there's a concern with water and drainage. With the current construction going, they built a mound out there that's about 12 feet high, probably about the width of the whole lot, right at the head of the creek drainage. So all of that silt, according to the EPA who was out last week, is draining into that ravine. ravine. And all of that dirt was the dirt that was around the storage shed. And as I said, that ravine, in the last three years, I found refrigerators, all kinds of house furniture dumped around my house, and in the last few years, my dad's been in the nursing home, so it's looked empty. So, of course, the place looks empty because I stayed here with my dad and my wife, who in the last eight months have both passed of cancer. So, it's my family home and it's been in the family for 30 years. My dad had a concern and he brought it towards the board in 98 about drainage issues. Now, last month, I submitted in writing that I was having a water test done and I wanted this to be delayed until, one, I could be here to defend myself properly, two, so I could see anything that was presented. You guys accepted the notes, but you never talked about it. And the notes of the meeting say I called in, but it doesn't talk about anything. And specifically, I made concerns about Article 9, Lakefront Residential Rules, and in that it doesn't say anything about storage. Is that what you're changing? Because here it says the only commercial businesses allowed are golf courses, resorts, grocery stores, or sporting goods stores. What change has happened there?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, Todd, go ahead.
So, the question that the opponent is talking about, asking about stores, that discussion is not being held today, sir. What's at, what the request is, is whether or not the property to the west of the existing property?
I understand what you're saying.
And so, the commentary regarding whether or not, you know, there are silt running off the other property that's currently developed, while maybe germane is really more specific to a subsequent request when somebody wants to develop this property. The question is whether or not this property should be zoned for commercial use, at which time somebody would have to come in and ask for permission to do any of those listed uses.
Okay, here's my question. Why isn't that up for discussion that wasn't discussed last month, or at the meeting?
The commercial storage facility is not being discussed?
Oh, no, I understand that about changing it to a commercial lot. There was discussion and information, and the public was supposed to be invited last month, and you read all that information about the public, that every family that lives off of that creek that I'm talking about was not invited, and I was told they were invited, but I talked to them personally and they didn't receive information. So, the public didn't receive the information. And that you're saying we can't discuss it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, Todd.
Sherry, when you noticed the, in the newspaper, that was noticed for this meeting today, right? And was noticed for the planning commission, correct?
It was noticed for the commissioner meeting today last month. It was for the planning commission.
And then in that notice, did you send, did you send private notices to adjoining those landowners within 250 feet of the property?
Yes, I did.
So, the only people that would have received a letter would be those people that own property within 250 feet of the boundaries of this property, correct?
Correct, and I might have even gone a little further out. I usually will do that subdivision just in case I piss somebody up front, so I go out just a little further for...
So, you did that for the planning commission and you did it for this meeting today, too?
I did it for the planning commission. I did not do it for this meeting today because you had said that we, as long as it says in the paper, people that need or would like to testimony may appear at said hearing or file a written comment.
Hang on just a moment.
Well, my question is, was I supposed to get something written through the planning meeting?
And you did.
Was that last month? So, you guys keep talking, but that would be last month, the planning meeting.
Right, and you did receive that notice.
Yeah, I did, okay. So, I'm trying to find out, that he keeps talking about a second notice, I'm assuming that's this meeting.
And I had told you that there would be an individual letter sent out, that it would just be publicized, and I told you the date and time.
Todd, do you need more time? Are you researching?
Okay, you can go ahead. I'm just doing some research under five.
Okay. Chuck, is there anything you want to add?
Well, there's a whole lot of things I want to add. I want to understand what exactly kind of storage building system is he running? Is it going to be completely open? Are you going to have any security around your facility? Or am I once again going to have people coming in at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, all hours of the night, running their recreation vehicles across my property?
Once again, that's not the purpose of this meeting.
I don't mean to be rude, but that's not what's on the agenda today. That would happen, what this gentleman's concerns are would be if and when somebody comes and makes an application for either a storage unit or a bar or canoe rental business, whatever.
Isn't that what he's doing?
No, no.
Today, he is asking, I want to zone this property.
Okay.
If I zone the property, I can then come back at a later date to apply for one of those types of uses, at which time then you would be notified of that meeting and you could bring your concerns regarding that specific use at that time.
So, he's already doing construction out there. He doesn't need permits or anything. He's already looking for...
We're only talking about this legal description. What's happening on that other legal description is not germane to this discussion today.
So, when does the public get to bring up concerns about a commercial entity? Because it sounds like once you guys have been to approve it before, the public even gets to respond to it. Because that's what you did last week, and even your notes show that I was a non-person.
It says you were on...
It says I was on there, but not, anything that I said wasn't said. That's why I brought the VA here, so I got somebody that I could at least say what I said last time. The concerns that I've got, well, same concerns my father had, and he brought before the board. And the board immediately, didn't even discuss his concerns. He did the same thing last month to me with the written concerns that I had. You accepted my request, but you didn't even have them. So, that tells me that you're disenfranchising homeowners over business.
I don't think that's the case at all. All we're trying to do is make a determination whether this land should be transferred from a...
I understand that.
Beyond that, then when he goes to build something, that's a separate issue.
Okay, and I know he's building something, what's...
Not as far as we're concerned, what all we're concerned about is transferring that land from one category to another category.
Well, excuse me, the construction he's talking about, all it is, we tore out the trees, which we can do that any ag property. And put some gravel down because the gravel trucks could still move.
And then he moved all the dirt to a large hill, which now sits right over the top of the draining creek that I had concerns about in my original paperwork, and I said that we were having the state come out testing. The state came out last week, tested it. That triggered the EPA having to come out and test the water. And it was the EPA said, there's a problem with that hill up there. So, I'll go ahead and call the EPA and say, hey, county doesn't seem to be too concerned about it. Do your thing.
That's not what the county has said. The county, as you said, we're here today to do one thing.
I understand that, and I'm telling you...
But you keep bringing back all this other stuff that we're not even addressing today.
I understand that.
Apparently, you don't.
Hey, Todd, are we at a point to close testimony?
You need to ask if there's any other proponent testimony, then you have to give the applicant a chance to answer any questions or rebuttal.
Are there any other opponents in the room? Any other opponents? None has come forward, Todd.
Then you may ask the applicant to come back up and if the board has any questions of the applicant.
Are there any further questions of the board? No further questions, Todd.
So, where you're at now, then, is you can close, you as the chair can close the public hearing.
Declare public hearing closed.
And now, you had the first reading, and now the board can set a second reading date?
Have we got that scheduled for March 23rd at 1:00 p.m.?
No, that's the, that is the one for to bring the storage in a second to highway commercial, so we could do this one right before that or after that. You need so many days to advertise?
No, the second, you already have, you've had public hearing, there's a 10-day notice requirement in the newspaper, and you only need seven days between readings.
What would that first Tuesday be? That would be eligible for...
You could do it next week. If you wanted to wait until the 30th, you could do it then, or, you know, it's up to you.
All right. Mr. Chair, you're going to be here. When are you going to be gone?
Next week.
So, we should do it the 30th?
Yeah.
We're discussing schedules here, Todd. We're thinking March 30th?
Your time?
Same time, 11 a.m.? 11 a.m.?
Yeah, I could probably, I have a meeting in Lake County at 9:00 that morning, but it should be done by 11:00. Yeah, I'll put it in there for now. I'll make it work.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you.
So, once you do that, then you, you know, what happens then on the 30th, you as the board can have discussions on the motion and a motion to approve, and then if you decide to approve, you can approve. If you want to postpone, you can postpone, or you can deny the request.
Okay. All right. So, there's no further discussion today and there's no action today. Are we correct?
Correct.
In order to close the hearing?
You've already closed the hearing. You as the chair closed the hearing. You held the first reading now, you set a second reading date. The matter is closed for today, and you can move on to your next business items.
Thank you for calling in, Todd, and being parliamentarian for this procedure.
You're correct. All right, everybody have a great weekend. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Chuck, I just want to be sure again that you understand what transpired during the...
I taped last month's meeting because I had a feeling this was going on, and that's when all the public was supposed to be there. No problem.
Well, I'm just trying to explain it again.
Because here's the thing, it's the same thing you guys did to my dad in 98.
We weren't even here in 1998.
I know you weren't. I'm saying the board, I'm using the zoning board. It made the decision, but then when it came time to build the building, there was never an opening so that my father could ask, what kind of security you're going to have around it?
There will be this time, but all we're trying to do today is change and classify that land from one thing to another. When it comes to build on that land, you can come back in here and talk about anything you want to talk about relative to that building project. But right now, this has nothing to do with the building project. This is strictly changing the land from ag to commercial.
Well, I understand that, but when I see Bob, when I'm told that people are out there excavating and moving dirt, and then I find a bunch of dirt moved, it looks to me like destruction's going on, so I'm going to ask the question, is destruction going on?
And I think he explained today, he's torn some trees down, he's brought some gravel, and he maybe moves a little bit of dirt around, which I believe is a legal right to do.
Well, no, no, and here's my moment. I didn't help out with the dirt, but it's what on my property? But the EPA had a problem with it when they gave up a little creek.
Well, then you should...
All right, and I'm trying to let you people know is what I'm trying to do because, you know, I'm tired from the Supreme Court and I worked for two presidents. I understand what's going on here. I'm trying to get a point crossed. I tried to get some information out to you guys last week. I got checked last month, and you did it right here in the documentation. You didn't even have anything that I said in the meeting.
Again, the information, the information wasn't pertinent to what we were trying to discuss at that particular time.
Well, he just said what was going on with the property had to be discussed at the first zoning meeting, and I still don't know what's going on with the property. They're going to expand the storage. How are they going to expand it to?
That's, that, if, my understanding, if they were going to expand it all, it would be in the original piece of property, not the second piece of property. All we're trying to do is...
At this point, building further storage not allowed by ordinance, that's what the next one is about, is to change the ordinance for rid of that. That's where your comments should come in.
Okay, well, that's, and I thought that was the first thing, and here's the problem. You're not telling me what meeting this is going to be at.
For this one, it's just about...
Now, here's my question, and I'm going to get invited to that meeting.
It's the hearing, but when we change the ordinance, you'll have to have a hearing for that one as well.
Okay.
All right, we've got about two minutes to go before our next agenda item here. Anyone else need to be here for the other? Is that anything you'd like?
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks for... Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to try to catch up to him and see if he can smooth some things out.
Appreciate it.
December now, not December now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are you on period about some medical stuff?
Oh. We could wait till July 1st for that, don't we?
That got passed and made to medical.
Yeah, and actually Todd commented that he's working on drafting some ordinances, and that's something that he's coming down the pipe, that counties won't be able to stop distribution, medical marijuana, but we're going to need, we're going to need some guidance in formulating ordinances.
Well, there's a question about whether they have a dispensary in your colony.
Sort of, Todd, is it...
But, you know, there's good and bad to that, but, you know, you can't prohibit it.
Regulate it.
You can regulate, dislike regulations.
Hours of operation and...
Whether it's in...
If we see any issues with that.
The dispensary license in your colony. On the one hand, so we've got regular tax revenue that they come in.
Good question.
There's frozen cost, but it's going to be here, whether we like it or not.
They tried to slow this whole down, whole thing down, like that's moving forward now.
They never, they don't have any reason, so it's just going to go into effect.
But that is a medical, not the recreational.
I think the lawsuit applies to...
Right, yeah. Because that was, that was an amendment. Because I understand that it was, you could only amend one thing at a time, and there was two issues in that amendment that required somebody to do two amendments in one, both separate.
Okay.
But it's all, that's just going to take that up and...
Especially...
What's irritating, I mean, this deal with him, who wanted to do that a year ago, the governor said, no, I need more time to think about it. Well, this medical marijuana, you knew that was coming, it's all around, you knew that was coming. Why didn't you do some planning beforehand to be able to handle this, the recreational stuff? That's a whole different topic. The medical stuff, most people...
Obviously, it's not like research.
Yeah, you're not inventing the wheel.
We need to make the call to him, right?
Yeah.
Would you mind doing that?
Okay, we need to do it.
I can call him and see what...
Do you think he has one this time?
Huh?
See if he's on this time.
Yeah, I talked to him this morning, and he was finally being here.
David Donald, I guess I would like to hear what Doug has to say first in issues he brings up before we talk to these people, if he's coming. Might get some insight. Might get some insight.
There he is. Look at that.
Oh, you're done this part. Did I try and dial him?
You want to talk to Doug first, or get his opinion?
Probably.
Very expensive, yeah. The simplest thing with the payback was through insulating the heat pipes down below. But if you do that, you're gonna end up with a cold floor over here in the treasurer's office, right? I don't know. Yeah. But with that heat system over there, the controls are not good. Would you agree with that? That's...
It don't shut off. It don't, it must be the air leak in the air line or someplace in the wall. It don't wanna shut off, maybe it's running.
Do you think it's, do you think it's a good idea to stay with that pneumatic control system? Or look at, thank you, Todd. Look at changing that over to where it's more mechanical in terms of...
Oh, there.
Yeah, so there's an electronic signal that goes down there to change those dampers around versus...
I think it is, must be, but I don't know what's going on here. That's like about it. But we got them guys coming too far, but they're asking questions about it. So I wanted to see what they say.
One of their, one of their recommendations, too, was to change that heat system to a, to an air-to-air heat pump and using, using the fuel oil as a backup system. But, like your comment earlier, many, many thousands of dollars and the payback on it was... Who knows if they'll be alive to see that.
Are you having issues, though, with the system over here now, right? So some kind of repair has to be made to that?
The air conditioning, they got that whole assembly, but they don't, last year, they got something, I think. They want to work on the first shelf. Cold, dry, and control are too long.
Can you hang around and listen to our conversation with these guys? Do you want to give them?
We did it, yeah.
You want to give them a, over in there?
People understood the wrapping of the pipes, we didn't understand the heat loss. But as long as the heat loss stayed within the building, it means that...
You're probably controlling it, it's all.
Yeah, I mean... Yeah, I just... I mean, I read the stuff, I get my electric...
The audio conferencing center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound. If you're the meeting organizer, press star now.
Sure.
Please enter your PIN, and then press pound.
Don't have a PIN?
Did they organize it?
They were organizing it.
Yeah, so we were just...
Sorry, I didn't get that. Please enter your PIN, and then press pound.
My dad didn't get it, he was excited.
There's a guy out here, he's talking at the conference. The noise is his voice, so damn loud.
Welcome to the audio conferencing center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound.
Time now. Time now. Exeter. Exeter.
If you're the meeting organizer, press star now. You are now joining the meeting.
Hello?
Please wait for the leader to admit you to the meeting. Thank you for your patience.
Can we come in?
All right, thanks. Yeah. So you might be, probably still have to wear a mask, but at least I don't think there's a...
Oh.
Hello. Sorry, I let you into lobby business here. All right. Hi, how's it going?
Good.
Yeah, so we're gonna, this is for Robert, Russell, and Andrew. I don't know if you have a video, or if you're just calling in and don't have a video. I got Carl and Brad Nelson from Otter Tail, and it's all as well.
What's Carl's last name?
Carl Samuelson. I'm also at Michael's Energy. Nice to meet you all. Okay. Um, are we on, are we on a speakerphone in the room? Can you hear us?
Yes. Roberts County, you're on speakerphone. Yeah, go ahead. You're on speakerphone, Roberts County.
Excellent. And are we meeting with commissioners for the county, or who is all there together?
Yep, we have the commissioners and our building superintendent.
Very good, thanks.
Yeah.
And do you all have copies of the report with you?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'll just go through the report. I don't know on the plan, use a lot of this. So if I'm, I'm running short of time, or if you have to get going, let me know. I'll just see if I can reduce it for the rest, and you can ask questions or email.
12:15. We're good till 12:15.
Okay. Um, so I'll just kind of cut through the report, go through it quick, and then ask questions as we go through, or at the end. And I'll try to, you know, try to everything through till 12:15.
Good.
All right, so some of the first stuff, reference sheet disclaimer pages. Uh, there's nothing, you know, very kind of boilerplate stuff, reference stuff, it's all stuff. You would know Brad Nelson's information there, but I'm guessing you all know Brad Nelson. You'll have his information available, so... Um, so we'll skip a little bit ahead to the executive summary. And this is like an overview of the entire report. Otter Tail allowed me to include some of the audit measures that were, as I went through, if I saw something that might be an audit measure, to include it. So the top part of the table here, shown on page I, or the executive summary of the audit page, audit stuff, and the bottom part is the electrification, meat of the report, the main purpose of the report. Some of the, one of the measures, the retrofit controls for the annex. This is, kind of got the existing pneumatic system and put in an electric side, or DDC system. We need to control it. Now, I threw in there, it had negative savings because it, it, the outside air damper for that unit appears to be closed, or at least it looked like it was closed when I was on site. Correcting that or putting controls on that would probably bring in more outside air and likely cause a little bit of negative savings, so that's why. The energy, annual energy savings for that under retrofit controls for annex air handling unit is negative. So just wanted to point that out for that one. The, under the electrification options, you have net present value, which I'll go over later. You see some of them are negative, doesn't mean it's negative. Saving means like negative overall cost. Again, the net present value section will describe that in a little bit more detail. I'm not sure how up to speed everybody is on net present value. I still, I'm not, you know, I dealt with it a little bit, but I'm not the expert on the follow-up. And that, um, but because of that, we put the approximate simple payback for all the measures alongside. Now, point out now, and it shows on the next page, that I used some incremental costs for the new measures. So the cost shown there is not the total cost to implement. It's the total cost, it's the cost to implement versus another option. So on the next page, so page I, I, there's an incremental cost breakdown where I kind of show that this would be the actual total cost. And this is the baseline cost, so you can get, why, because you add them up, it should be close. Grounding errors, you know, irregardless, or irregardless, or regardless of the grounding error, it should be fairly close to the incremental cost. Does this all make sense? I don't have, I'm not seeing everybody, so I'm just kind of assuming that I missed everything. Okay. Um, all right, building description, can I go and draw up some for this? Because you guys are probably even at the building. So, you know, this is a little bit for what you guys see and know maybe even more than I do. And this is what I saw when I was on site, and it probably was included with the calculations. Did you see anything? Or do you see anything, or have you already gone through it, that looked incorrect or suspect, or maybe high or low? I'm sitting in the silence, at least in the ballpark, of what you guys have in the system. Um, so again, we're gonna kind of gloss over this, because especially your facility, you're know way more than I did. You'll be able to lead me around and show me much of the system, so if I have questions, I can go to him. So the current state of your facility, page two, is just the, just the HVAC stuff. A book, previous page was, or an overview of everything. And this is the HVAC stuff that we're gonna deal with. There was much in the report. There's nothing, just gonna point out that we're concentrating on the boilers, the courthouse, the three boilers in the basement, and the one larger boiler for the annex. There, the boilers in the basement of the courthouse appear to be 2003 or '04 age. And the annex was about 15 years, maybe slightly older. But as far as age, as far as typical life cycle cost for HVAC equipment, we typically use between 15 and 20 years. So that's, you know, 2005 nearing the end of even a 20-year life cycle. Doesn't mean they're all, they're imminent failures, you know, if you guys take care of them, it could last much longer, but that's a typical average, I guess. Uh, next page, fuel usage. Um, this is a summary of all your electric and fuel usage. Also in the ones, this doesn't differentiate between the annex and the courthouse. It shows everything in the ones. You buy your fuel on a, in a lump sum. So this graph here isn't, you know, I didn't get this from Bill. This is kind of like an assumption based on how you use it in typical, in the modeling that I did. So it's just kind of a, this is probably how you're using it. There's, you buy it once, like, if you buy it even once or twice a year. So, um, this is, I guess, a assumed average. So, all right. Uh, page four is the same stuff that was on page three, but in numerical form, basically. And it shows the cost as well. Um, nothing anter than the previous page. So page five, instead of going through this quick, some of these kind of questions, just go them out, if they stop or whatever. Is the equipment usage for page five. It's a best guess. I didn't do any metering when I was there. I didn't actually meter equipment to get modes and continuous modes. So it's me talking with the custodian and what I saw when I was on site. So this is the breakdown that I, that I came up with. The fuel use, there's only, there's no high graph for that, since there's only two boilers, the annex and the courthouse boilers, and the split up between them. I did, I did point out somewhere in here, I'm not sure where it is in the report. I think it's later in the report. The courthouse, at least when I was on site, it was 20 degrees out. The courthouse boilers, they're not very heavily loaded, and they're fairly small. So for the, for the size of the courthouse, you guys is very efficient as far, you know, because you mainly just use radiant heating. There's not a lot of supplemental heating that are shot, locked around, so, and it's, you know, the stone major heat for a fairly large, a fairly big of mass, you know, keeping the heat in. So we have newer windows. So all in all, it was surprisingly efficient for the behavior of the building. I'm surprised I pointed that out. All right, heating electrification. So this part, this is page six, the top part, shows a kind of a breakdown of using different rates and how much it costs for, you know, this is how much we use for your fuel oil. We use $2.15 per gallon. Now, that, you know, is an average of the last couple of times you guys paid. So it should be in the ballpark. We use the average from your electrical rate, Otter Tail, or your general rate that you're on now, and dual fuel rate, which I'll get to, it's in the next section. Go now. Uh, the dual fuel rate is the rate that a lot of the measures are calculated on, at least the electric boiler measure. So, or dual fuel rate, you would put in a new service, and Otter Tail would have, you know, well, not control, but they would have, they would monitor it. You'd use it for heating, and if Otter Tail needs to curtail, which happens rarely, but it does happen, you would have to shut off your electric boiler and go back to your fuel oil. So it's just that you have your fuel oil as a backup, and your electric would be the main source. And that's why, because it's, because you're not packed in the grid with KW with demand, they're able to charge a lower rate. There are options, which if you have questions, it'd rather be better to answer. But there are options for combining meters in order to lower the overall charge instead of just adding a new service. If you're willing to combine the courthouse and the annex onto one meter, that is, you know, that is possible. And you can talk to Otter Tail about that, it would lower, lower your overall charge. You still use the same amount of energy, but it's a different option. I wasn't sure if the annex needed to be separate as far as internal reasons or whatever. So I didn't approach that here, but it is, it is available. So, yeah, sorry to touch on the dual fuel. I'll get to a little bit more in the measure itself. Here's the net present value. Now, this is where I stutter or fall apart, and if Carl was gonna, he'll prop me up. But it's the overall cost... Carlo's gonna, he'll prop me up, but, um, it's the overall cost for, yeah, the overall whole production drive or overall cost of the unit over the lifetime, which we use twenty years, so the overall savings and cost of the unit over twenty years. So it's supposed to give a better holistic view of the options that I chose, so, point out that it takes into account inflation for, you know, inflation for money and, and also the, the increased, uh, cost of, um, potential, you know, increase within electrical and fuel over that twenty years, so. Right, touching that pretty good, Carlo, they, math curator. Now, so fine, we did, we did use a discount rate of two and a half percent, which is, um, you know, probably more akin to your cost of money than, um, you know, some higher discount rate, which does projects look a little more competitive, too. Okay. Um, and yeah, mission details, we have this, we, some customers asked for it and would like to know how much you're often, uh, from what we were said, it wasn't a big priority for you, for you, but if you're interested, I can, I'd send it to you. Um, alright. Page eight, um, here's your energy consumption, and I tried to put it all in one graph, okay, it looks like it came out, so I'm not too worried about it, but, um, the blue, you know, the blue, orange, or the fuel oil, and the rest is, uh, electrical. And then the dark green is the proposed cooling, the other units proposed electric. So, the first two columns are your courthouse, and then your annex, and then the electrification option going to the right, so. It's also shown that the table, this is more of a, you know, overall graphical, and then, um, as far as total BTUs, that's, I tried to scale like the right and left side to the overall BTUs we're about to say, does that make sense? So like, you know, one gallon of fuel oil is a hundred and thirty thousand duels, or is one, KW is like three thousand four hundred thirteen, so multiplying it out, that's, you know, it should be about equal or uneven, so, hoping I didn't confuse everybody, but I think you'll be able to follow, if you don't, it's a little bit silly. Uh, and then cost, the next page, that's, uh, pretty self-explanatory, more self-explained area of the BTU stuff, because everybody knows that, um, the total cost for each option, um, pick the left or right. As you'll see, um, the, um, first two options for the electric boiler have some fuel oil in it, because as much as Otter Tail doesn't want to curtail, they, they, they might, or they do, and they're, so we even, um, ten percent, even though Otter Tail, from what I understand, is ten percent slightly high, usually below ten percent, uh, curtailment, so, that's why there's a little bit of fuel oil, and the assumption is, well, you all still have to use your fuel oil boilers, you can spend. Okay, um, so here's the options for electrification, and a lot of work to do. Um, for the dual fuel electric boiler, you would basically be putting in another hot water electric boiler, and some isolation valves, and, you know, it has its own pump, so that you can supply from your, you could supply electrically through your electric boiler when you need it, and then when, you know, when the Otter Tail says, oh, we, we may need to curtail, or you'll have to curtail from super cold, and everybody's using too much, then, um, you isolate your electric boiler, and you go back to your fuel oil boilers, but supply the same water. So you'd have a couple isolation valves to be able to switch it over, um, Otter Tail did measure it, or does monitor it to make sure that you do do it, and there are penalties if you don't. Um, I didn't include those, if you'd like to know those, let me know, or let Brad know, and we can, you know, discuss this a little bit more with you. Brad told me, I didn't realize this was an option, that you can also use that same meter to feed your air source heat pumps, like your, like you, split system air source heat pumps, similar to what you have in the basement of the courthouse, the, you know, ones that hang on the walls with radiator on the wall, they have air source heat pumps, you can use those instead of window units, if you can tie into the same service, and you can use that dual fuel rate to help cool your building in the summer, so you, right now you're using, you know, window units, and those are usually efficient, um, also they're being charged at your general rate, which is maybe nine cents plus or minus a little bit, so, especially in the summer, which is probably on the plus side, but, with this option, you would tie it all into your dual fuel account, and then you'd be charged at four, four, four point five cents, so, yeah, dollars, you turn it to my head, four point five cents for the cooling. May I would still be able to curtail your, um, you know, summer load, if basically get a summer peak, and still, you know, tell you to, to shut them off or curtail them. Um, yeah, but that's, the cheaper rate, I'm not sure about the summer curtail, or how much, or how often, but again, would be a Brad question.
Andrew, that, that, in the summertime, for the four months of summer, we, we just, uh, turn them off and on every fifteen minutes during a control period, so they always have some air conditioning.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah, hopefully, but, um, okay, um, so, the dual fuel electric boiler for the annex, this is the same, um, uh, basically the same thing as for the courthouse, you put another boiler in, and you bypass, um, your fuel oil boiler, it's going to be heating, unless Otter Tail tells you to curtail, you're using the same air handling unit, and you're using the same cooling as you do now, um, this is just a supplemental, uh, way of supplying the same hot water, so, there's as much complexity with this, because the other one, I tried, we added in the air source heat pumps, and this one, we said, well, just a straight electric boiler, you would have to, again, but there isn't a whole lot of room in your, um, annex HVAC area, so you'd have to find another, you know, another small foot prick for it, for a new boiler, and then be able to tie it into the, the piping, and then, you know, a couple of isolation valves, um, and, like I said, Brad had mentioned, you can tie, if you do dual fuel on both buildings, you would be able to tie those both into one meter, you know, so, you would be able to, it would be advantageous, because you have less meter charge and less overall charge, um, and I don't believe, or I don't think it would cause much for any additional cost that's going to be involved in that, so, um, we should decide to do electric, um, electric supplemental heating for both buildings, I would look into that, or ask about that. Um, I think that's covered most of it. Yeah, it doesn't include, um, replacing your air handling unit or your condensing unit, um, for your air handling unit, both of which are apparently old and may need to be upgraded soon. Um, we touched on that a little bit with the next, uh, measure, on page twelve, for the air source heat pump, is a way of, yeah, heating and cooling with air source heat pumps, um, air source heat pumps do not go down, you know, to the, to the very cold temperatures that, um, that South Dakota will see, so you'll have to put in, or if it's, if it's not available with the heat pump, you'll have to put in an electric assistant heater, so that it'll keep up with your load, um, you know, on the very cold days. But as far as cooling, um, and heating, it would be, it would be sustainable, it would be more efficient on the cooling side, and more efficient when it's not electric for the boiler, um, for the heating side. This system would not go on the dual fuel, because, you know, putting all this in, I assume you would take out everything you have, and you wouldn't have a backup, so, um, this would be a one or done, that you'd be all air source heat pumps, or, or electric resistance from the air source heat pump, um, so you wouldn't have a backup, uh, fuel oil system for this system, so it should be charged at like nine cents for KW heating on this option. Uh, I'm gonna go through the audit measures quick. Uh, so, it looked like you did, were cross connecting boilers, I'm not sure if that's something you were looking at, or, or thinking about, it did look like some of them were lightly loaded, and some of them were heavily loaded, and I figured if you could tie through and heavily load one boiler, and just shut off one boiler, it would have some favor. So the savings for these, some of these audit measures are amazing, and it's just an eighteen year payback, simple payback, nineteen years, so, if, you know what you're doing, it's inefficient, you know, highly inefficient, it's just an option for, for more efficiency. Insulate, close hot water piping, so, it's just one use for everybody, most of your hot water piping goes up through the wall, it'll be hard to access, there's stuff that is, and there's stuff in the basement, but mostly the, the heating thing is, of course, there's, well, you put a bunch of insulation, it'll get to where it's being called for instead of feeding some of your areas. Um, replace lighting with LED, this is the, the bigger one, which is, that are stating, you're already starting to do this in the basement, there'd be similar, um, costs and savings to what you've already started implementing in the, in the basement. The count I have on page eighteen, if you wanted to look at it, that's the count I saw when I was walking around, just to get a rough idea of, you know, the watt and cost involved, um, the rebates that I, that Otter Tail has, at least from the utilities I work with, are very favorable compared to other utilities, and I'm guessing, and this is just a guess, and there's nothing to hold me, you know, hold me to it, I guess, but, um, that LED rebates will start to go away fairly soon, because everybody's got them, or everybody will have them soon, so they'll, you know, so, I mean, I don't know when or how, but in, in the future, I have no idea, but I guess these will be the next, you know, five years, you'll start to see those either decreasing or go away for, for LED base, that's something to keep in mind.
Bill, could I, could I ask a question, or just make a comment? Uh, when it comes to lighting, um, one thing that jumped out at me is that, um, the courthouse lighting, um, was like twenty-three percent of the total energy cost, and then over in the annex building, it was as low as nine percent of the total energy cost, and, and that was going back to page five.
Sure.
Am I, am I looking at that correctly? That, that this, this facility, you know, is, is that much higher than the, than the building next door?
Well, um, it was a, like you said, it's a, it's an estimate based on the, the number of count I saw and hours that I saw when I was over there, like, the building was during Tuesday or Wednesday when I was there, and most of the upper floor, the lights were off, and I assume that that was normal operation for those, so, so the overall building usage, you take out, you know, the, uh, the second floor, or much of the second floor, and part of the first floor, you're gonna reduce it, it's a catalyst, so, that's why the HVAC became a larger part of the annex, and the lighting became a much smaller part.
Okay, that, that would, that would make sense. Okay, thank you.
Yep, come on. Um, so, so I lighted controls, uh, this one I put in, because I, I thought I would have more saves and more savings, um, in the only place I really saw, maybe the lunchroom, um, and that, you know, people are in and out, so, um, I'm not, it's in there because it's a, it's a very important things measure, um, but it's not something to, unless, unless you're replacing the lighting in the, in the lunchroom, I wouldn't really worry about it, even though I just came. Um, retrofitting older exit lights, this is a, this is recommended, because it's a relatively easy fix, you can buy, you can order those LED retrofit kits for, for, uh, for air condensed lights, they're fairly inexpensive, I think there's some rebates from Otter Tail in part, and even, even though most others, others have, have done away with this, but, um, I'll have to double check on that, I say it out loud now, I'm wondering if I'm right or not, but, um...
Yes, we do have rebates on those yet.
Oh, yeah, so I would do it, too, because many of the other utilities I work with, they don't have them, like, the, telling the exit lights, so, they're, you can, like I said, you get the retrofit kits, and you can, you can just be in true with the LEDs, and the reason they pay back is because the LEDs, or the exit lights run whether you're there or not, they are supposed to, so. Um, retrofit controls for the annex air handling unit, this is the one I mentioned, had the maintenance savings, it was a maintenance savings because of the outside air controls that appear to be shut out. Now, nobody in the building seemed to have any detrimental effect from, um, you know, the, because the outside air being shut off, it's not like everybody was suffocated, or the, you know, CO2 levels were crazy high, um, but with, if you direct all the controls, there's gonna be a minimum, unless you have put in sensors to, to reduce that, um, you know, that you're gonna be, allowing more outside air, and so that's the, the negative savings, but, um, there are some savings, you know, on, on top of which, on top of the, but the negative saving, or the negative outside air, so, or trumping in that, taking over. Um, doesn't mean it's not, you should consider it, you know, some of the, the controls right now are working very well, and the custodian knows better than I do, so, um, it's, I'm sure in the near future, we either, you're gonna need to either replace or, um, correct the controls, but our, if they're, they're gonna end up not working at all, none of the dampers will be working or whatever, so, it is recommended, even though there's a positive savings for it. Um, alright, uh, the summary of the rest of the base, so this is, well, especially when I was already going to room, I did say that, uh, it's, you know, the summary is gonna, kinda hinge on what you decide to do with the annex, um, air handling unit, if it, you know, and the condensing unit for it, because the condensing unit is pretty old as well, if you're looking to get rid of both, um, then you might wanna look into getting air, to those air source heat pumps, or, you know, to, in order to replace it. If you wanna keep that unit around, for, you know, a lower cost to keep it, you know, keep that, you know, uh, multi-zone unit around, then you might wanna go with the electric boiler, so, um, put off the, oh, then, I didn't touch on this, but it is something that's to consider, or, how I did the air source heat pump, your annex building unit, that multi-zone unit is put into four zones, multi-zone, um, the air source heat pump option said we, you should install four different air source heat pumps, kinda like a furnace, like four different furnaces you would have in your house and stuff, and similar to that, and just control one for, one furnace, and one air, or, one air source heat pump per zone, and then you would be, it'd still be fed from outside air from the, the dampers and the supply that's in the state, which you tied into, that's the, the overview of how that, that system is working. Um, alright, so, next step. So we did contact a simple vendor, nobody, there was some promise with some, and then some said, you know, like, they would give us, like, some high level cost for what we were doing, um, type of, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of incentive for them to do it, I guess, um, but, they, the CGJ Electric did, at least, contacted me, or get back with me, and we conversed a little bit, and I did send them some information, but I had that gathered, so they do have some of this initial information, if you want to use them, doesn't mean you have to use them at all, you have other vendors, or you'd like to use some other vendors, that's a topic of them, sort of about what I was envisioning, those are the measures involved, um, I'll take their information in tutor in the next step. Also, um, the financing is an issue, Otter Tail did work with Bremmer, who had some, you know, access and some assumptions, helps with the assumptions I was making for, for some of that, uh, net present value stuff, um, so, they also, um, would be able to help out with financing, but I'm sure you guys know all about financing and how to finance stuff, so, um, it's just another option, important information also. Um, alright, so last two pages is the lighting count, like I mentioned before, and, um, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent accurate, I was there for, like, four hours on a Tuesday, and I had a few other things to get, but it should put you in the ballpark of light counts and types that you currently have. The top is my estimate on watt, did you ever eat that, or whatever you're, or if you want, and then the bottom is the total. And then the bottom is the totals for each type. And then I happen to have an infrared camera with me. I'm not sure if it helps, it looks fancy, but there's infrared images on the last page. But this, I would point out that this camera helps scale. So some things look really red and it makes it look like it's pouring out of it, but the scale is reduced to like, you know, could be thirty to thirty-five. So the thirty-five looks like it's pouring out of it and the thirty is freezing cold. So it doesn't, because it's bright red, doesn't mean it's pouring out, it's hotter than the other stuff on the pictures. All right, I got four minutes to spare. Good timing on my part. Um, is there any other questions right now or?
Yeah.
Does anyone know Don, he's got my information or email information. He don't have any questions now, but we'll look through it and have questions later. So, but we'll leave it open for the last four minutes.
I, I don't have a lot of questions. I thought maybe the LED lighting in the courthouse would be maybe one of the, one of the affordable priorities.
Okay. If you, that's one of the things that, that Otter Tail does have rebates for. So if you're interested in that or if you think you wanna pursue that, I think Brad got forms or, you know, can show you the forms of where to go for rebates and that.
Yeah, and I can, I can, I can zero down a little bit on, on the rebates too and I can get you some estimations on your actual rebate. Just like the heat pump, the heat pumps, you know, we've got two different side rebates according to what, you know, what efficiency of the heat pump you use too. So some of those can be a little bit different. We can, I can go over them with you too, just get ahold of Don too someday if that works out for you.
Sure. Yeah, that was, of course, it'd have to be a group decision on that sort of thing, but given the fact that our wiring is as old as it is and if we could reduce the load on that, not only for a safety measure, but to improve the lighting in the, in the building. And then that intrigued me also about combining a meter into one, one meter for both buildings. I mean, the county is responsible for the bill in total, so if we had a cost savings there, why not take a look at that?
Yeah, yeah, because, because right now you're getting charged a meter charge on both buildings, plus a demand charge on both buildings, where you could have it all at once instead of having two facility charges, you'd have one facility charge and then you'd have some coincident demand, so you wouldn't have probably, you know, might save ten, fifteen KW total. So that's another additional saving. So, and I can go over that too, more specifically too, so we can share that with Andrew and Carl too, so.
Yeah. And as long as we're looking at a wish list, I know that that heating system over there is from the early eighties and.
Seventy-five, eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Okay. And, yeah, it's.
It's coal fire, you're saying, huh?
No, we, we had some issues last, last summer and we had a lot of difficulty even finding a contractor that would work on the, the old compressors for the cooling side of things. It's, it's at the end of its life cycle, there's no question about it. Might be able to limp along a little bit by doing a dual fuel type system over there, but I always thought it was pretty inefficient where you would take fuel oil and heat a radiator and then pass air over the top of the radiator to do a, to do a forced air heat system that way. But anyway, put in when fuel was cheap apparently.
Not anymore.
No, no, no. So that, that's all the comments I had, unless the board has some other questions or comments for you, Doug, or do you guys? I think there's just two boilers over there though, isn't there two guns, two boilers on that? Yeah, age eleven, you've got three boilers, but there's actually two there. Yeah, not that it's that critical, but other than that, that's a very comprehensive report. Very good.
So I'll, I'll get a few more numbers off of Andrew's report here and I'll talk, talk to Earl and Andrew and then, and then I'll get, get back to you. And then I can, I can always come to a commission meeting too, and even if Andrew or Carl wanted to come along too, or whoever you guys wanted to do that, so.
Sure, okay.
So I'll, I'll put more numbers together too, so, along with meter charges and stuff too, what that, what that looks like.
All right, well, I appreciate the time that you spent on this. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I have anything else, thanks everybody.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Bless you guys.
I have a question about exit lights. I've seen them very often. The exit lights.
Ah, yeah.
You know, something at, at the funeral hall, it was like every three months we were changing it. We went to those retro picks, those LED ones. I'll bet you a year and a half we haven't changed one and then I'll probably go today and have to change one.
I've been once over there.
Yeah.
That's been a lot of years now.
The only issue is, I mean, we can think about the courthouse, but I know my sister Kate wanted to do the same at Grace with the church, you know, buy the bulbs, they're quite expensive, but, but their lighting, their boxes had to be rewired and it was a big issue. So I don't know if you're in the courthouse that they would do, but ours might be newer. But that would be, you know, you're the same electricity.
The bulb is by a month or something.
Yeah, you're the same electricity plus the cost of the bulb, that would be the song. So I, I really think that would be one easy thing, replace our LED fixtures, address the annex building because we're gonna be doing that one in three days.
I don't see a huge return on investment, you might say, but like in case the annex was a matter of ages like old.
Yeah, you can be, you can die.
Whether, whether saving money or not, it's gonna have to be something, you know.
I was kinda disappointed in the lighting. We, we left out of the jail and the, and the highway department, we had some pretty substantial savings there in electric, but.
Well, we'll have savings plus we'll have rebates.
Yeah, but even the whole, even that, it was like payback football, a lot of football gear.
What are your thoughts on the air source heat, you know, like the basement? They have the cooling on the wall, right? What do you think, the new addition?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What do you think of those?
They work fine, I guess, but I didn't have too much time. What's on your, what are your, 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 your? This one's, certain beers are going to be.
For having all these air conditioners, maybe we need to go to bath. You know, that part down, the new part down the basement is all done.
Yeah, if you want to be jobless there.
I think they run a lot quieter than these things.
Yeah, definitely. Are those, are most of them up in the, who have blast brick? Yeah, they're, they were, the tape got like old.
They're wider, it takes some work, but.
Yeah, and I don't know where you would connect it. That would be an issue.
Outside, unit outside.
But you're talking about a unit like this, most of them. I mean, it's like, where we.
They could probably, they could probably, they're inside, just run the wire, run the lights over too.
Get rid of the door for a little more? Sure, unless you want to kill it. Were you volunteers?
No, I didn't. I had, I had an extra one.
Yeah, she gave me one and.
Yeah, I printed one off.
If you don't mind, Doug.
I put them all away in a week and a half.
Okay. I gotta get more organisms to just slap here. All right, Doug. You read through that.
Do you want to be paid for this, you know, the last couple of years ago? Yeah, like.
I estimated nineteen thousand for the air conditioners. I imagine that would be, my, my, air conditioner itself plus labor, I assume.
But the payback on that wasn't on the basis.
Well, I, I have a concern with old wiring in an old building. You start loading them up and stuff, but they get hot.
Bremmer's upstairs, they're way up to, oh, and doing rough, I mean, that's some old wiring out there.
It is, okay.
Not good with the guy. Just when it comes down to the lights or left in. Put it there, you gotta take them up before you start messing one up, it's gonna fall apart.
Oh, boy. That's why, you know, lights like this, I think if you put your hand up where the transformer is, you wouldn't be able to hold your hand on there. It draws an awful lot of power. Thank you very much. I got an update on Jill. Still feeling a little better. Loss of taste and smell is for the birds. It's hard to eat when nothing has any flavor. Thanks for checking, so. She's feeling a little better.
I tell you what, I'll take you out.
Thank you. That's why we keep him around, isn't it?
Hello, Tom.
Okay, motion died. Example, second by Miguel. He questioned on the bills, all in favor, signify the same. Motion carries there. We get done with the flash. We approve the flash. Is there anything else that we need to do, Don? Is there a motion to adjourn? Don, your second for the German, thank you, all favor of that one, signify the same. Motion carries and we're done. Thanks for filling in there, Kevin.
You guys are ahead of the pier.
What'd you call him? I said, I guess, so I said, what'd you call him?
This is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs, countryside assisted living and memory care. And Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, use our online banking to save you time. Still some service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water and Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners at Reverse Osmosis, right here in Sisseton. And of course, Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.